This conference will now be recorded.
Wow.
Okay, good.
What's the...
You're doing more beer here.
Looks like... Around the fall, is rocking something again?
I want to try to take side if my wife is...
Okay, Chris on the bottom.
Uh...
I'm sorry, so you're not going to...
That's for the people. Better get that.
Hey Cal, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, are the speakers over by the board, are they on?
Yes, they are.
Okay, the audio is just kinda not so great. But it'll be there. It's just not...
I'm gonna go. Um, I'm gonna go. I put some underwear on your bed and you can put it... Put it aside, not wearing your stuff.
List?
Yep.
We have underwear on the bed?
Yeah, that's somebody online now.
I just created her.
A little bit too much information.
Alright, everybody, it's 9:30. 9:31 actually. We've been waiting for Russ. I can't get ahold of him. I don't know what's going on with that part of it. Um, there is a form, so...
We're disconnected.
Cal, do you want to...
Yes, sir. Mr. Berry.
President.
Ms. Hanson. Mr. Kish. Mr. Truckee.
Here.
Mr. McNamee.
Here.
Sir, you do have a form.
Thank you. Alright, let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
We're disconnected.
Kevin, do you plan on staying for the entire meeting or did you want to get moved to the front? Do you have something to talk about or you want to stay or what?
Uh, we have a couple of items that would be great to be at the front. It's up to you, but we were willing to say the entire time. But it was good for you.
It's up to you. If you're planning on staying, we'll...
We're gonna keep it in order.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. Is there anything we need to move around on the agenda?
That's what I just...
Yeah, I know.
Uh, you do have two late proposals that came in. I don't see them here, but Mr. Soto, uh, they would be 10A or 10B and C. Unless you don't want to add them for the lateness of them coming in.
It's okay. Um, is the fellow with the GIS here?
He's supposed to be here. I mean, he just had a hard time finding it.
Okay.
I don't see him in the audience.
Alright. If there's no changes, agenda will move on?
Uh, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion. Second.
All fair? Alright. Okay, audience comments on agenda items. Did we have a... Did we have anything on our list?
I do, but I'd like to wait until the DMG, until we bring up the DMG. While I can address now whichever.
Go ahead and address it now during the comment section.
Catherine Oswald, Sunset Key Lakes. Um, it came to light after the last meeting about the DMG's, uh, owner or the head of the company and his past, and I'd like to find out why the board did not vet this company? Why the board did not let, uh, let us know what the background was.
Okay. Um, speaking for myself, I vetted this company. Typically, when I vet a company, I look to see what the company actually does. I didn't vet the individuals who work in the company.
Yes.
Yeah, this is work for him.
Yes, he does. But once we did find out that information, we did have lengthy conversation with him about it. Um, so that has been discussed with him.
I just don't know why. We didn't know about it.
You knew about it as soon as we knew about it. We didn't know about it either. Okay, any other audience comments? Alright. Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, next consideration of the new management firm, the DMG contract. Um, Tony, did you have anything on that?
No, uh, we're going back and forth in various terms. I have the clean version open. I'm just reviewing it. We can just... For 10 minutes so I can make sure this matches up with my last redline version.
Alright.
My other meeting last night, I think early till 6:00.
Okay. So we'll, we'll come back to that one.
Thank you.
Approval of the, of the meeting minutes. Um, we had two... Two months in here?
Uh, your last meeting and you have the continuation meeting, correct?
Okay, I didn't get a copy of it. They on...
They were in traditional materials. Passed out.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I've got two. Um, I looked at, I went through them and one of the things that I saw on attendance on the January 20th meeting shows Dave Schmidt being here, which as being present, he was not present, he was online.
Well, right, but he's identified as being online below in the first order of business. When we have the roll calls as David Schmidt, the engineer, and several residents also participate, see what... That's, he's here, except that above doesn't necessarily mean physically here. It's just that they were in attendance.
Okay.
But if you want to change it, they're your minutes.
That's okay. Line 35, Chairman McNamee has...
Same minutes?
Correct. Have seen a vehicle with a trailer parked in the grass. And Supervisor Kish will investigate. I... That's what it says.
There was a discussion on that, uh, as far as a vehicle. It was very broad, uh, statement and she's trying to make the move as reflective of what was said as possible without being verbatim. If you want, just strike it, but it was suggested and commented. I think, uh, someone from the audience spoke also.
It was about the signs on Newport.
Right.
Kay. But this doesn't give us any context or anything. Tell us what we're talking about.
Yeah, there was no, I don't remember any trailer being parked there. I went and reviewed, I looked at the signs.
No, it says a vehicle, oh, and a trailer.
Yeah.
Talked about...
I mean, do you want to strike it? It's, uh, if it has no relevance, you can strike it. If you want to suggest some changes in the verbiage, we can do that too.
I think the bottom line was that they wanted the signs down by the marina to keep the boats in the trailer parking.
Right, the signs are there. The signs further down.
Further down are the ones they want.
They want it gone, yes. And I didn't see need for them to be there.
So that was just a situation where there was a truck parked down where the signs are, so they should stay there to try to keep them going to a parking lot. Far parking lot and then, uh, right.
Yeah. Should we strike it?
Either the, if you took out the period after investigate, uh, I think you were gonna look at what's the signs needed.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So I mean, it does say that. Uh, Chair McNamee has seen a vehicle and trailer parked in the grass, uh, near the no parking signs?
Well, I'm just looking at it from somebody coming back a year from now and reading this and they're gonna, and it's like, what are they talking about?
Okay, strike it.
Yeah. Does anybody else have anything on the January 20th minutes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jerk, I may, um, alright. Beginning of line 39, I forgot the time. 39, what sentence?
Minutes, 20th, we're still on the 20th, okay.
And it says attorney purist regarding the pipes under the 41 bridge and the painting. And then it said attorney purist stated a huge collector project to be part of a grant. This could be considered. I'm not sure why I would. Maybe I asked a que, I think I recall asking a question. Could this be part of a grant application?
Uh, we have Mitch, you talked to Mitch about that also.
But I don't think I made the...
I agree.
I, I don't, I'm sorry, I may have said...
Right.
I guess...
Saying you advocating for it.
Question whether the project could be part of the grant.
Right.
So it'd be attorney...
How would you like that changed?
If it could be, Mr. Chair, attorney purist, uh, question whether the project could be part of the grant. Period.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, no, sir, my quick review.
Okay, then we move on to the minutes of the continuation meeting that was on the 27th. Does anyone have any... Anything they want to bring up on that?
Mr. Jerk, I could, I'm beginning on line 12 or I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
It says attorney purist mentioned that it's paralegal, it's a little Chris Max Parker. Uh, New York Great Fields.
Okay.
Please.
Change that to partner instead of paralegal.
Otherwise I will never hear the end of it.
Yeah, she heard it, I'm sure.
You wouldn't appreciate changing that. So thank you for that consideration.
Anyone else? Um, on line 43 of the same one. Chairman McNamee asked if the buyer of parcel 13 can be asked to reimburse the district for legal and engineering fees related to the purchase of the property. Um, I think we were talking about, uh, not the purchase of the property, but the, the expenses that we're incurring moving forward with the zoning changes.
That is very questionable, sir.
Yeah. I didn't ask for engineering and legal fees for the purchase of the property. Only what we could, what we could cover in the future dealing with the... I'm sorry?
Processing, future processing.
Absolutely, yeah.
(Inaudible) to the zoning of the property.
Someone has it back in, in...
I would just suggest to be regarding the development of the property, include the zoning, utility relocation, and all those.
Or, and maybe just, and further expenses incurred.
We have a, we have a provision operating agreement if you want. Sorry, we weren't mentioning that. Yeah, I'll do that and hit that, yeah, because I think it's past that.
Okay, good.
45 documents.
So how do we want that changed?
I would just say regarding the development of the property.
Okay.
I think it's a catch-all.
Does anyone else have any issues with the minutes of the meeting from the 27th? If not, we'll move on. Okay. You want to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
GIS presentation and discussion?
He's here. Oh, it's me. Hey, first, thank you. Uh, you have your computer, right? Yeah, if you could log into the meeting, then I can share and get a little, go up there or we don't have a screen. Um, does everybody log into the same meeting?
Not that.
If anyone's logged into the meeting right now with your agenda packet, then we can get it.
Not logged in.
Uh, if you put it up on your screen though, they can watch your computer screen, sure.
I was hoping when it said presentation, I would be able to see it.
Uh, you don't have a screen.
Okay.
Joyce, do you guys have one here?
We had one show up when they sold us the project, right?
That's, yeah, that was my personal screen.
Mr. Chair, if you ever need another screen after that one meeting, we ordered screens, so we have big screen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. When will we see those?
Well, if you ever want to have it down here, it would be.
Okay. Alright.
Foster of my heart.
Do you want us to give you a, a bit?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, let's, let's move on to utility operations. Mitch?
Good morning. The water treatment plant, everything ran good this month or last month, no issues. We met all of our requirements. The wastewater plant, everything ran well, met all of our requirements. We made 2.23 million gallons of water. We treated 2.4 million gallons of wastewater. We sent out 9 million gallons of reused water. Used the same amount of chlorine. We did have a couple of water usage complaints. We went out and did the meter reads, verified, those were all satisfied. We did our normal monthly checks. No odor complaints. The number three calcite tank, I can't remember if I told you last month, but it's been installed and back in operation. The PBS meter and the chlorine and pH meters that we ordered, the analyzers continuous, we have installed the, the pH and the chlorine, we're still waiting on the PBS. The permit renewal, David's aware of it. I think you've been speaking with him and the capacity analysis report, the, uh, well road, we put the gravel on. I met with Dan, we went over a couple of culverts. We're gonna get dirt replaced, add a little more gravel before the concrete pad, the generator, the generator's static, we'll be connecting it this week, so we'll be back in business back there.
Are you gonna, are you, excuse me, are you going to need, um, dirt pushed up around that pad to make it for fall protection?
So we're gonna put gravel around that pad.
Okay, perfect.
So it'll be within limits for fall protection.
Perfect, alright.
And it's a small pad, you've seen it right up to the generator, so.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be well.
You elevated it?
Right, it is elevated a little bit, yeah. Not, not the 30 inches that we had spoke about though. So, but with, with the, the elevation that we have, so we, we poured it 18 inches and it's got the fuel tank that puts it up about three foot above the road and then we'll fill up gravel around it.
So if water came up, it's gonna hit the gas, uh, the fuel tank?
Yeah, it'll be good.
Good idea.
We'll be able to walk up to it without anyone following.
Good idea.
So it should be good. Um, we have an open house today. If anybody wants to come to the plant, work around, you're welcome to. I'll answer any questions you have when we launch, if you want to have lunch there. So, oh, one other thing. We pull hundreds of samples every year at the plant. We pulled a nitrate and a nitrite that we sent to the lab and the lab did not run it. So we sent that to BEP. The BEP issued a warning letter to us that we'll have to post on the website. We have a letter from the lab saying that we missed it. The samples before and after were good. There's no water quality issues, but I just want to make you aware that we will... There's no fine or anything like that, but, um, we have a letter from the lab as well taking responsibility and we have since changed laboratories.
Um, Dave, did you have some?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
That's it. If you have any questions for me.
No, I was out there yesterday. I noticed Mitch had like 15 guys out there pressure washing and cleaning and all that, and I got to thinking after that, that's like getting prepared for a graduation party at your house. Maybe we should do that once a year.
We do need it every year. I mean, we do that every, yeah, every time.
They look good though. Al, the other thing too, Mitch pointed out that, um, his firm paints our fire hydrants.
Yes, we'll be starting.
Was unaware of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So every other year we try to paint.
Um, if anybody has, do we have a fire hydrant or two that we would like them to start with that are specifically bad?
There's, there's some that need it, so you might as well just go through them.
It'll go quick once we start.
Okay.
Probably within three weeks they'll be done.
Appreciate that.
Do you guys, you guys pre-treat the rust or anything?
Yeah, so all we do is we go around, we pressure wash everything and then we service the fire hydrant grease it. If it needs to be greased, exercise it. And then if it has rust, we'll just take a wire brush and hit that, put some oxide on it and repaint.
Did you mention how everybody engaged that, uh, that's going to repair it or something?
Oh, it'll be, it'll be on the website.
Can I ask you something about Mitch and his guys? Kathy Oswald, Sunset Key. Our list station went off over at Sunset Key and they were there within, I mean, I timed it, three minutes. They were over there fixing it. Thank you.
Yes.
It's just...
Mitch is doing a great job for our community.
It's driving people crazy.
And I would encourage everyone to go to that plant tour or, you know, go through the place. It's pretty nice.
Yeah.
Um, just to see what we're talking about during these meetings. You guys are welcome as well, but you've probably already been there. It's up to you. Okay. Um, are you ready for your GIS yet?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how we, what's the best way to show this for you guys. I'm logging to the GoTo, so in case, so that way the folks on GoTo are not missing out, but as far as like for you guys, just trying to figure out what's the best.
If you just turn your computer around, they can see it, uh, or they can get behind you too.
Okay, I got a question.
We can see it.
Charles Jordan, Peacock Lane. The other item, Mitch, what about cost of the road? So there's supposed to be an update.
Publicity.
Road back to where the generators at?
So we did that set. It was on last month's bill. The board had approved up to 20,000. I think we spent, I think we all dried up. There's one problem we can buy for that 20 grand.
What's gonna happen to the road as far as the culverts?
They're working on that presently.
We, we have, we were out there the other day marking culverts that needed to be fixed or replaced or whatever. We take three of them, 18 inch culverts that have to be replaced. We opened up the end. There was a couple of them with crushed ends on them. We had one of them opened up while we were there and, and there's another one. They're gonna go back with some equipment and open it up. Um, those ends have been crushed for some time. So those will all be open. The culverts will all be running water. Everything that's there and has been there will be, will be running water and open, so that'll be fine. We have some culverts that are getting a little rusty on the bottom. Bottoms have some issues. We are going to try to pick the replacement of those up in the grant in the future, but at this time they're, they'll run as much water as you put through them. But they're getting pretty rusty on the bottom, so we'll look at that under grant and we have that coming up. But as far as right now, if a storm rolls in tomorrow, um, every one of those culverts, as soon as we replace those three, every one of those culverts will be doing what it did. That road is, is not damaged at all compared to what it was.
I have a question. Do we need additional culverts back there?
Well, that becomes a core engineers thing. Um, we're working with the core engineers because we talked to them about impact from the restoration project for the other things. Alright, so that is something we'll have to take up with core engineers because we're gonna get into the... Core engineers is saying that our water isn't gonna rise here and, and I think that's hogwash. Canals drain swamps, alright? That's why those canals are in there. They drain that whole section of land. They were gonna build houses. I call it Golden Gate tour, the grid or whatever you want to call it. That whole section that's back here behind us, if you look on your map, pull up Google Earth or anything, and you'll see all the grid work above our neighborhood here, right? All that grid work or roads that were put in to build houses back there, they were done. They were blocked up. There were cement bridges. It was all in there. The infrastructure was there when the state decided to restore that. And, um, so as they restored that, they closed the canals as part of the Everglade restoration. All the big pumps on 75 push the water, are gonna pump the water out so it can disperse sheep flow through the land. And they're gonna restore the waterfall to the way it was pre-canal time. Alright, so canals drain the water. They take the water table down. That's why they put them in there. They would be able to build houses if they didn't put canals in. As they fill the canals, the water has to go through the land. That's gonna bring the water table back up again. So yes, we are looking at the issues that that will create. The core engineers, uh, has worked with six LS farms right down from us. They have 5,000 acres of tomato farms. They have substantially more money than core engineers providing to put in dikes, things like that. They say that we have no effect. So we are working with the core engineer to address all that.
One other thing, leapfrog on that too, is that, uh, we, we need a new, uh, well line out there. It's almost two miles long. It's probably, well, the last time they checked it's a million and a quarter, a million and a half, maybe even more than that. Dan's working on trying to get mitigation money to raise our, our, uh, water supply lines out to that well and get that covered by mitigation money, which is a big ticket item for what we're looking at in our CIP in the future, so. Um, he's working very diligently on that to make that happen and, uh, I for one couldn't be happier with the progress that he's making with these fellows in such a short time.
Core engineers is not real open to telling them what you think is going on with core engineers. Pretty much this is what our studies, we did all the studies, this is the way it's gonna be. And, uh, that doesn't hold up. Uh, six LS farms, of course, they're a bigger operation and they swing a lot bigger hammer than we do. But, uh, the core engineer buckles and they have billions of dollars of projects voted there to build levees, things like that. So we're right in the middle of the, the thing. I don't know how they can just ignore us and say it won't affect anything we have. So we'll continue to work on that. I can't tell you exactly how that's gonna go. We are in contact with the core. We'll see how that all comes together.
Did you want to speak to them about the meeting that you had with, are they called?
Um, I could mention what last we was talking about.
I know, but the rest don't count.
And, uh, I was sitting right before you, but typically the agencies, in order to create a record, written communications, like a letter, a detailed letter, explain the district's position, I think would be helpful. I understand you've had a number of communications with them. I think an official position from the district may be have a letter drafted for the next board meeting, the church, to submit about the engineering concerns and other concerns, make it part of a core spot. Good. We haven't sat down with core engineers yet. I, I spoke to the gentleman on the phone. Um, they, we do have a study, actually that was done a while back. This was, it talks about the study, the core engineer coming in here. Um, they were in here and they did a, a well grade road trip report. They came out, core engineers, this was prior to we have to pay on this thing. The actual study when they were here, I'm not sure when they were here, but it wasn't anytime recent. It's been a while since they've been here, months. Um, so anyway, they came out, looked at the road and they said the road needed some repair and that, uh, we have to take care of that and we are doing that. They talked about a couple of crushed culverts, the ends of them were brushed. And, uh, I don't know when those were brushed, but they're gonna be straight here shortly. One of them will be straightened up, um, right while we're there. Uh, the other ones Mitch is gonna take care of and get them straightened up. So we're gonna try to meet, uh, all the discrepancies they said we had with the well road, uh, when they came out, did their study. Um, what they won't address right now is the impact that the increase, uh, is the higher water table. Uh, they feel that, telling me that water's not gonna be any higher. And somehow my common sense back in here somewhere says, no, when you plug the canals, your water table's coming up. And that's what, uh, six LS farms is worried about with. That's why they're building their levees, um, all that kind of thing. Remember canals drain the water. And when you push it back through the land, the water table has to come up. The reason they put the canals in was to lower the water table in the first place so they could build and, and maintain houses out there. And if they fill all the canals, the water table's going back up to the way it used to be. So we will see a higher water table. We don't know how much higher. We're working on that with the well road. Um, with, uh, some of the grants we're looking into, uh, we may be able to, some grants, uh, lift everything out, worried about electrical boxes and things out, um, on the well road because they're only two, three feet off the ground. And with hurricane and everything, we saw water levels that were at least that high out there, probably. And with the hurricane and everything, we saw water levels that were at least that high out there probably. I think it was Mitch might be able to, just a couple of feet.
I actually have video of it, a, a foot above the well road before the hurricane. Because it did rain that whole week.
Right.
After the hurricane.
Right, and it's just starting to dry up out there now, usually by this time it's uh, we don't have any standing water and it's dry. So it's not, it's still wet out there yet, so I think that as this continues and they push more water, we will see higher water. So they have, they have monies and, and impact monies and grants and stuff that we'll try to work with to do some things like replace the pipes and raise all the electrical out in the well field, submerge the third wellhead. Um, we have three wells out there, two of them are, have submerged pumps, one does not. We have to get the third one uh submerged, it's changing out the whole pump, goes down the hole and sealing up electricity, so if the water comes over the top, not a big deal, but we have to raise all the boxes. I just spoke to um we're gonna get into that down the road when we get into the FEMA grants, but um I spoke to our grant writer with FEMA grants and he thinks that that can all be done on and off in a FEMA grant, we might be able to raise all the electrical up there. Um, so we'll have to get with David then and get some uh one hundred year or five hundred year levels. And see what we gotta look at the height when we raise it. Um, but um that's some of the stuff that will be, I'm looking at. So it's not just, it, it's not putting a Band-Aid on something, this is, this is a big operation, it's millions of dollars. And it's gonna take some time to get it all together.
Yeah, uh we're gonna move on this as quickly as we can because Orchid Cole has expressed concerns about it and also Lindsay Case's property would potentially be affected by it. So while he's in the planning stages, it would be best if we could get this all taken care of so that we're not playing catch-up after the fact.
Engineer says there's no, we're raising it a foot in our excavation. And we're not, according to their model, this canal is not gonna overflow.
It's just, it's not just the canal that we're worried about, it's the groundwater coming up. So, but we're, that, we're working on it anyway, so. Anything else from anybody about this topic? Okay, let's move back to our GIS. Please.
You're the printer, uh Felipe, so you can uh put that on, share your screen with everyone on the GoTo.
Alright. Well, good morning, thank you guys for taking the time to come here today. As of today, your system is up and running. Uh, it's, it's been up and running now for a while, but it should be complete. As you guys already know, the system is private, so only can be accessed via username and password, which I believe you guys all have that at this point. If not, I can send a masked email out to you guys with your username and password and the link. And I'll, I'll create a tutorial on how to save it onto your system, so it's just a one-click button and it can be opened up from here.
I'd love it if you would do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and I guess it's a masked email and arguably it's public record, so yeah, uh features on this GIS, Felipe, that intervalley utility lines?
No, no utility lines, no water sewer, that, that has not public, that's not on the system.
Okay.
That data can be created and can be in the background, but it's not gonna be displayed publicly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and because the statute that provides you that ability to be examined.
Thank you, correct. So I'll, I'll set that tutorial for you guys, so that way preferably, and I'll also include in the tutorial as well um an app that you guys can download for your iPads and for your phones, it's an easy app which you'll be able to open it from the app and there, the functionality will all be the same, it'll be a lot more smoother, it'll be GPS capability and so forth. As mentioned earlier, these are all the layers that, that have been created, that have been working closely with David um and Holontes and other folks, other consultants, getting as much information as we can to put, build this system for you guys. We have uh the easements and deeds and there's a hyperlink in there that you guys can click on. And that brings it to Holontes' figures, so you guys can verify that all the information that's in there is backed up from Holontes. So that information is there publicly.
Excuse me, so I, I noticed that that's on um the K's Drive side quite a bit, but I, I'm trying to find out where our easements are.
Mm-hmm.
And, and because we gotta clean them and whatnot, and especially on the Newport side, I'm have we got some Newport uh on the west side of the canal there?
This side right here.
There, and down. Yeah, that whole side there, I'm trying, um so do we, do we have anything on this GIS that's showing us the, the stormwater drainage system and the easements that are involved with that?
So I do have some easements in there, um if we go and click on the struc, the structures and pipes.
Yes.
Um, these pipes in here are all, all within these easements, we have drainage easements, we have utility easements on this side over here. We also have uh, let's see here, we have, that's more of a utility easement as well too. All the plats are also in here as well too. So if you click on this, well, there is no plat currently for Sunset K, uh for Evening Star K, there is a plat that I included in there for you to verify. Um, but I have a layer that highlights all the easements that I could gather as of today, it's still, I mean, I'm more than happy to continue to look for those. It is a work, it is an effort to get all this information, as you can see here, let me turn this on. Everything that's in red and the dash line are all easements.
Yes.
So we have some over here, we have some here, I have some here up to the north, and that, all that matches the records that I included as well too. Uh, but you said you were interested in this area here?
Uh, yeah, actually I'm in, yeah, because on, on the east side there, the, all the drainage swales are in the backyards next to the, the canal. But on the north side, they're all up in the front, next to the streets. And I've been looking to find, do we have a permitted easement in that? If we do, how many feet out is it, you know, and whatnot, and I haven't been able to find that anywhere.
Off the warning circuit or?
It, well, even along, even along the road itself.
You, okay.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is ditches in there, but I can't find anywhere where we, we as a community.
I don't think we have a permitted drainage easement along um
Newport Drive.
I think we've got a dedicated right-of-way which the law says.
The right-of-way, okay, yeah.
Um, how do we see that?
Yeah, well, uh fortunately it is on the plat where it is platted to the south. I believe the northern portion of Newport was an easement document or a right-of-way document that was created many, many years ago. Think I've seen it.
Is this what you're referring to David?
Yeah, that site's pretty good.
Let's see.
That's, that's uh Sanctuary Point.
Oh Sanctuary Point, yeah, that, that Sanctuary Point area is pretty much all been platted. Uh, there are some site development plan approvals for Sella Marsas. Uh, but all the rest of it is platted, so those drainage easements would show up on the plats. This Newport, uh Newport side that part of it was platted, the very southern end. But part of it to the uh north, I think was conveyed through a separate instrument.
But um I was hoping that we, we would be able to look at our GIS and see
Well, yeah.
what, what we got, I was of the understanding that this was completed, that was my
Oh, and it's, it's, this is everything that I've been able to compile up to this point, absolutely, I mean, I've been more than happy to keep working with David on
Okay.
um working on those plots, it's a, it's a, it is a
Work in progress.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, but it's tedious to get all those delineated and, and put into a GIS.
Yeah, and, and I haven't had the opportunity to look at anything more recent than what was supplied back at the end of August.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I've got very little information, so when you do send out the passwords and so forth, then I can type into it if the board desires.
Well, and this is my issue is, I've been trying for months to try to find out what we're responsible for in here, uh is, you know, especially over on, on that west Newport side. Um, because those ditches and whatnot need to be cleaned and I'm trying to find if there's surveys or there's something in here that tells us what it is and what it's supposed to be and who's responsible for paying for it.
I, I can gather what information I may have, I've got a couple of big three-ring binders full of different instruments and easements and different things like that, that been collecting over the years.
But I remember coming to your office and, and you know, trying to get this down.
Right.
And I, and I'm not getting any closer.
Okay, let, let me try to send you what I've got as far as the uh, the, the plats and then also uh, I think I've got a copy of that instrument that conveyed the northern portion.
Do you think it'll show like the, the Sanctuary Point, it'll have show details like that?
Well, Sanctuary Point, again, that was all platted, so we've got real good information on Sanctuary Point. And then also even uh going a little bit further north on uh on K's Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Where, where the information's a little, little more limited is over on the Newport side.
Okay.
So what's the point of this? That's, that, that, that's what I wanna know, I mean, what's the point, you, you're doing all this, that's why I was against it from the beginning. You're doing all this, you know, it's supposed to save us engineering money or something. But you're still working with the engineer to get this put together, so I don't get it, I don't get what the, what this GIS is for. I, everything we put into it, I don't get it, how are we gonna use it?
And I was under the understanding that this was a three-year contractor, three-year invoice, so we were gonna pay you know, little over eight thousand dollars over a three-year period and from what I'm understanding is we've already paid for all of that?
Yeah, I, as we've
Well, except for this last bill.
And that's why I'm wondering, wh, when we had an agreement with him to do things in a, in a staged thing, why did we, why did we accelerate the payments on it?
That was a board decision to get it all done right away.
They authorized us to, 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 did we, did we give him a, a, a change order then? Or, I mean, did?
It was just a, a reflection in the minutes, uh
It just said, get it done?
It, it, when it was presented, the board looked at it and they said, oh, we want all of this now. And instead of doing it over three years, it was decided to do it all at one, as one project.
Well, I've looked at what he's got and one thing that jumped out at me right away is is uh ownership of land properties. And I'm clicking on different properties that, that I own myself, that are showing that they're owned by somebody else and whatnot, and I'm wondering what good is it, like Russ says, what good is it if, if we're using outdated information?
It's, what, when was this, because the
Just recently.
Recently, okay, well, I have the twenty twenty-three data up there, cause the data changes, appraisal data changes weekly. Uh, but I make an effort to do it every month, so as of last week, there's twenty twenty-three Collier County data there, so I'm not it's something that I, I, that once they update and I get my hands on it, I push and I release it to your system.
Okay.
So um as far as you clicking on properties and they're not showing the correct information, you know, let me know, but that, that shouldn't be the case at all.
Okay.
Um, going back to Russ's point, I understand where you're coming from, absolutely. But the best thing to do is, this is an investment for your, for your development, to be able to have information at your hands. Knowing where all your structures are at, your pipes are at, and getting it to the point where it's gonna save you money in the future, cause you're gonna know what you're responsible for and what you're not responsible for. This is, trust me, I've worked with developments that are still working off of old maps, old plats and they're in the dinosaur age and we, we want, we're trying to get you out of that dinosaur age to get into a system like this where you, everybody on your board right here has access to.
It's, so when you get this done, it's gonna be like an official government record that we can use to proceed with anything that goes on, say the hotel looks torn down and they wanna uh rebuild it. We're gonna be able to use this GIS in order to
Make decisions.
All, everything that's gonna be done.
Everything that's, this is as good as it sorts and I work closely with David on this, so it's a reflection of Holontes is a reflection of me, is a reflection of your information of what you have here, absolutely, you'll be able to make decisions. I mean, it's gonna help.
Well, we'll be able to make decisions, but like I said, say somebody wanted to build a new hotel over there, right? Are they gonna be able to use this information, will we be able to supply them with this information?
That's your decision, absolutely.
But, and it's gonna be valid information, it's gonna be uh taken by the county or the state or whoever's involved as official.
Yes, absolutely, this is all public data.
But the problem that comes into this is, you're gonna pay him by the hour to compete, continue putting this information in and you're gonna pay Dave's firm by the hour to supplying all that information, I get, that's gonna be it's gonna be a, a money eating machine.
What are the ongoing costs, like once we get it set up and the information's all in there, what's the maintenance fees annually?
There is, there is, right now it's, it's, you're paying for privacy, so it's a hundred dollars a year, it's ten dollars a month, that's it.
Okay, as far as maintaining it, bringing every year, every month you bring up to date?
That's, 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 that's me.
That's all under that system, we're not paying anymore for that.
No.
Okay.
I mean, if, if Russ says, hey, I want, I wanna add new information, you know, we, we collect a new valve locations or we did a bunch of new work and, and so forth. Then I would, I can get with Russ and be like, okay, that's gonna take me a day's worth of work and that's it. It's just the basic work.
We don't have an ongoing maintenance fee to keep the information fresh on that.
One of the things I was looking at over on um that K's Drive side was I've looked at, at the county and they show an overlay of the streets in, in uh in Sanctuary Point. And then when I look at this, that shows where it is, they're offset. Um, they're not, the picture and uh overlays are offset. So if I'm trying to find out um how far the easement is off of the street, the street is shifted over on, on this, and, and, and I'm looking at it and I'm going, all we're doing is getting the same outdated information from the county and putting it onto this. So if it's wrong there, it's wrong here.
I, I use that as the base, but I'm not just cookie cutting from the county and putting it there, you know, I, I do what I do to make sure that it's as accurate as possible. So in that case, it would help me a lot, Steve, if you could take a snapshot or take a screenshot, be like, hey, this doesn't look right. And then I'll look it on my end to make sure that it's reflected correctly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's, I can guarantee you that I'll definitely get back to you and make sure I look at it on my end. But I'm not sure what area you're referring to.
Uh, well, that's one of, but, but my biggest disappointment in it is trying to find out now, where do our water lines go, where do our sewer lines go? Where is all that stuff and where are the drainage easements? I, I, I'm trying to find that and I'm not getting, I mean, we have more on our website with where the pipes and everything are going than we have on here.
As far as water and sewer, that was never included in the scope of services because we don't wanna be, we can't put that out because that's, that's homeland security.
Well, what we, what he talked about, if I'm not mistaken, was that we were gonna have two different access points, the public would be able to access it, and that the board would be able to access the private part.
Sure, that is correct, yeah.
What I'm understanding is we don't have the private part.
This is the private part, what you guys have access to is the private, the username, the public part, I haven't published yet because I wanna make sure that we're all okay on our end before I I give you the public version and it's embedded into the CID website.
Okay.
So that's not a whole lot of, that's ten minutes of my time to do that. But before we publish it and everybody can have access to it, I wanna make sure that it's, I get your blessing.
Well, what got me going is when I heard it's complete.
Well, it's
That is the word that was used, it's complete.
Yeah, we're towards completion, absolutely, I, there's not, I mean, I'm gonna work with David on making sure those easements are, are cleaned up and we can get as much information as we can and get that on there. But as far as all the heavy lifting is done on my end, I've been working on this for seven months, so I just wanna make sure we can fine tune and, and thus get everything done and cleaned up before I can give you the public version and it can be embedded in the public website.
Felipe, I haven't been able to get, I haven't had the opportunity to get into the, the CAD portion of it at all, but these are attributes on all the lines saying what size they are or if they're private or public.
Say the last word.
Or they're public or private, or CID actually.
Oh.
Or whether they're private.
I need to work with you on that though, being able to differentiate what CID responsibility and what's not. But all the lines are there as far as sizes and, and length and stuff, yeah. Size, type and length.
We can set up the CID assets and the private assets by different colors or something like that, or even as an attribute.
Yeah, it can be broken down however, however I want, however they would like it to be displayed.
Do you feel that this is useful enough to continue paying what we're gonna end up paying, that, he doesn't scare me nearly as much as the engineering fees?
I can't forecast that, I mean, I have But most of the information we have have, has been transmitted to Felipe already. Uh, the only thing it sounds like we may need to be doing is getting him the information on what we believe are CID assets and what are private assets.
Which, I mean, it's, there's the, as far as like CID assets, we're referring to mostly stormwater, correct?
Correct. We primarily stormwater.
Okay. And, I mean, there, I've worked on other CDDs that have a lot more. So I mean, CID doesn't, Port of the Islands doesn't have a whole lot of, I don't see that being a huge effort, in my opinion.
I would just take his drawings and take a highlighter and mark what CID and what isn't.
And that's, yeah, that's not-
So then, if, when he's done there, if we don't show a drainage easement on Newport, that means there isn't one? And therefore CID isn't responsible for any of that stuff?
We may not have the documentation to show that there is an easement. There may be an easement. There may be an easement by use. I have found easements for some of the drainage along there. There's some up by the, by the county folk ramp and so forth that I don't think I've seen anything on. So there may need to be either some additional research or assumption that it is a district asset.
Well, yeah.
But you're saying this is, the future costs are, once it's done, I mean, you don't, you're not hitting us for- I know, I'm being completely honest. No, all the, all the hard work, all the money upfront is getting it created and building it.
Right.
And then, as far as if you wanna add something, it's just whatever time it takes me and that's it. That's how I operate with all the other CDDs I have to work with.
We're not questioning, we're not questioning your ability or anything like that.
I just wanna make sure we're on the same page, that's all.
One of the communities that he does this for is much larger than the OI. It's two thousand homes. And maybe four hundred dollars a year. And that's just updates that was requested by the board.
And maybe it's that we can't give them the information because it doesn't exist.
Right. And that's, that's part of this exercise, is getting to figure that out. Because I'd rather us spend the time now and effort to see what's available, what we can get our hands on, and be able to come back and tell you, hey, we found it. We got it. It's gonna be a GIS. You guys are gonna have access to it. Or it could be like, hey, it just doesn't exist.
Okay.
So that's part of the effort as well, too. And I'd rather us go through this full exercise than you not know at all.
And in the future, for us, like when parcel thirteen comes on board, a lot of that information can be transferred directly into the system using GIS information. As built surveys that the engineer record would supply to the district.
Any questions for him?
Let's locate all those easements for the drainage. We've been working on drainage for a long time, years.
And it's a big part of it, just knowing what you're responsible for?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I, I go through this exercise with all of my CDDs. This isn't, this isn't my first rodeo with you guys. So I know where you're coming from. And it's a big part of it, of being able to research all those plots, reading all the dedications, knowing what you guys are responsible for or not. And it's so, like I said, it's a work in progress. And I'll, and I'll keep, I'll keep a bug in David as much as I can and see if we can get that figured out, you know?
Ninety percent of the assets pretty easily, two to five blocks or what? I would say the challenge is probably along Newport and then probably a little bit along Union.
Anything else? Can you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at books. I dealt with CID's in Florida, Georgia. And I can tell you, whenever they first implemented them, when they first came out in the nineties, there was a lack of communication between the people and the community development department and the engineers. They weren't helping. You were going down a path to do, so a lot of these documents are not gonna be into your documents. They will be in the folks office. I went online today and tried to see, you can't read them. You will have to go to the folks office and actually call them. But there's a plan and documents of just about everything you're talking about. It's just a case of taking the time to go to the- But the engineer doesn't know about it because they were never told. I mean, it's public documents, but it's a fact of no communication.
It would be nice if we, as a community, could do a lot of that research without going through our engineer to do it. Because he's busy in half of Sanibel and whatnot, and we've got the talent here to help him do that.
And actually, most of the information is available in-house for us.
In your house or in our house?
Probably i- in the district record someplace. But I've got it set up in binders as far as all the plans that have been filed. The site public plant approvals on most of the developments. I am a little sketchy on some of them along Newport, Case area.
Okay. Should we move along? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If you have a card, I'd like to see one. And then I will call you too to just make sure everything's going and you have the information that you need. And if we have other citizens that might be able to assist you, whatever. Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
His bill has been held at least-
Yes. Okay, that takes us up to landscape maintenance.
Well-built road generator cost update. We got that, I guess, in our- Item nine B, the well-filled road generator costs, that we're working that all into the grant for the FEMA reimbursement. That's good.
Did you have any, Kevin?
He's still speaking, I'm sorry. What? Okay. All right, on landscape, Soto has taken care of the irrigation in the small detected zones on Newport and Case Drive. Broadleaf application was applied last month, prepping it for the spring application. Two holding areas that the plant are now drying will mow next week before the rainy season. The mulching has been complete. We did notice there was a large truck parked on the sidewalk and the sidewalk had been broken down. We've took note of that, license plates and everything. We're gonna keep that on file as we move forward, go to find the entrance. We've noticed that there was two streetlights over here at Orchard Cove that are out and one on Case Drive. We'll get the numbers off the pole so we can report them. That's all I have.
I have one thing on landscaping. When they clean the berms over there by the water plant, storm plant, there's some big trees that are on the berm and in the inside of berms themselves, some large trees that they shake down. Might look into that. That's gotta be should be clear.
In that state of water flow?
It's in the, one to the north.
Catherine Kellmeyer, Newport Drive, the pots over there by Real Estate Office still have not been weeded. Cleaned up, they're still very nasty.
Are you talking about the ones that would just be on the south side of the Red Hill building? Or more than that?
No, there's what, four or five great big clay pots that have gabe in it?
No.
And there's weeds and flowers and spikes on the bottom. They just need to be cleaned out.
I know, I went over there myself and I did pull some of those weeds out, but I had a hard time telling which, you know, if there's flowers, you don't, weed is flowering, I can know the difference.
It's just one basic plant that comes out. It's only one plant you will pot, unless it has bugs.
Okay. We can take care of that. Could we get you to come over?
Sure.
We'll help you get that the way you want it?
I would have done it, but I didn't wanna take it upon myself to do it, only because I didn't want every other owner here taking things on themselves. So by all means, Steve, contact me and I'll meet you over there and we'll handle it.
Perfect. That's the way to do it. Good. All right.
Now we're gonna move into the new agenda where we're paying for the palm tree trimming and all that.
Bring that up.
Okay, item ten B, Soto gave us a proposal for ten eighty-three for palm tree trimming. It cost a thirty-seven hundred dollars. Item ten C, the proposal for fifty-nine ninety-five. That's the number of the proposal for palm tree trimming on Union Road, five hundred and fifty dollars. I make a motion that we approve both of those.
Any questions on this first? Now, this past week, I went back to North Dakota and I brought a-
Get a second.
I'll cycle.
All right.
All right, now it goes to discussion.
Good to go?
Ready for discussion.
Last week, I went back to North Dakota and I brought back a scissor lift, fourteen feet wide, fourteen feet long, seven feet wide. It was thirty feet in the air. If the community wanted to, this is something that we could do on our own, using my equipment. It's up to you guys if you wanna have Soto do it, or if we wanna do it as a community. Up to you. You're welcome to use my equipment if you want to. And, but that's up to you guys. Catherine? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't think it's a good idea only because of liability and insurance.
I'm just throwing it, just throwing it out there. But I appreciate your comment.
That's exactly what I was thinking, that if you're doing this in your individual capacity, that's your call. If you're doing it on behalf of the district, then the district has exposure for any issues that can occur.
Okay.
Regardless of anybody using it. So that's something we may wanna double check with the insurance carrier, has volunteers donated scissor lifts? Because those can be interesting pieces of equipment for those who don't know how to use them, I'm sure.
Let's take a vote on this then. All in favor of accepting his proposal? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. You can move forward with that if you'd let her know.
And as part of that, we need to notify the carrier, insurance carrier, get some guidance from them. If the district is wanting to be for the sponsor of this, just put the-
We just decided we let Soto handle it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's individual, not as a vendor of ours? That's the question.
So, so it'll do it as-
It's a vendor of ours, yeah. So then, yeah, so, okay. Thank you.
Now we're to the engineering report.
You still got the other proposal, B or C, the one for five?
I combined those together, yes.
Okay.
Right. First one I'd like to present is for the DEP renewal, and I'll pass these around. This is the proposal and work authorization.
For those that don't know, DEP?
Oh, Department of Environmental Protection. On the wastewater side, there's a requirement that every five years that your permit is renewed. Part of that is the update of the testing analysis report. Also, there's an operation maintenance component there, too, that'll be an inspection done. And any deficiencies noted and so forth, any kind of repair items. It's outlined on the third page of what our scope of services would be.
Yeah, I read all that. Anybody else?
You know, they're, they're just, you know, some different things that do need to be submitted. We'll also, there's a groundwater component also involved that we have a hydrogeological firm. It's Omar Rodriguez. He's done some other work for the district, so he's very familiar with the groundwater here. So he'll be doing a groundwater monitoring report and so forth, and assembling all the documents. There's usually a little bit of give and take back and forth with, first, you know, getting things reviewed with plant operator. And we can involve Dan in that also, as far as the latest on for the utilities, that he's familiar with everything. And there may or may not be meetings with DEP, and that's to be determined down the line as we go. So it's typically, it's a multi-month process. Ideally, you have to have the application filed six months before your permit expires.
Like in June.
Yeah. So we'll be working to get it at, the fees outlined there, we'll be doing it hourly not to exceed the thirty-seven thousand dollars without, unless something comes up unusual, we'll come back and let you know. But we, I think we've tried to anticipate most everything.
You've done this in the past, correct?
Yes, we've been probably doing it probably since nineteen ninety-two or so.
Can you give me an idea of what we may have paid in the past to have this done? Any idea?
I, I, I think we pretty much have, it's probably pretty much the same cost considering inflation to an increased wages and so forth since ninety-two.
Do you have any input on that, as far as having our DEP? I don't know. Do you work on that with any of your other communities?
We do. We work a lot with our engineering firms, so we do a lot of work with Homontes, among others.
Okay.
And I'd maybe like to get some background and some understanding, or maybe-
So should we, you think we should hold off on approving this for another meeting? Or what are you suggesting?
What was Dave's, what was your response to that? Are you, are you encouraging us to approve that at this point? Yeah, the sooner we get started, the better on this, because it does take time. We just wanna make sure we get everything filed in time and there's no issues. We do these on a regular basis. We're doing, doing them for like Collier County. We're doing Gasparoa Island. We do it for some of the small, a lot of smaller plants also. So it's something that we do all the time.
You do it for the county?
Yeah, we do it for Collier County. There's course a lot bigger.
Five years?
Yeah, it's every five years. The water system's a little bit different. They don't require annual permit renewals, but they do regular sanitary surveys on the water system.
Okay.
Is that you familiar with these?
Yes. All of my facilities have them, correct.
Every five years, they run about the same cost?
Yeah, I don't really know price-wise, but I do know Dave, he'll, not only here, but several of my other facilities, so.
If I may ask you just one question?
Absolutely.
David over to thirty-seven thousand to six thousand to another vendor, it looks like six thousand seven fifty.
Yes. Yeah, that, that, that's going to hydrogeological firm. It's Omar Rodriguez and his company's, I'm trying to remember it.
I don't know. He has been the geologist here as long as I can remember. And he is like the geologist in South Florida. Yeah, so he carries a lot of weight with the DEP if that matters.
Is there a markup? Are you getting like a management fee, administrative fee or subcontractor work?
Let me check. Normally, we don't do a markup on that.
Just a pass through?
It's usually just a pass through. And that's what we do with all our subs, where we do get them involved down here and for the islands. We don't do a markup. Yeah, I don't, I don't see that noted on here. And I don't have a copy of this proposal.
It's a good point, though.
But typically, we don't do a markup.
Okay.
And we use our standard Collier County rates. That's something we've been doing for a long time. Whenever the Collier County approves with their annual contracts with us, which is again, like a three-year contract, we just duplicate that down here to be fair to you. We don't use a special fee.
Thank you. The question for the board is, are we comfortable authorizing this up to thirty-seven thousand dollars? Or do you want to, do you wanna do any research on it?
Is a one-month delay on this gonna matter too much to you?
Probably not. Probably not, but.
It's just a big number, you know? I'm not saying that you're not absolutely great at doing it. I'm just-
Do you do all the water plants for the county?
We don't do the water plants, Ken. They, they, they don't have to have the five-year permit renewal. I'm gonna say we probably do the bulk of them. Yeah, we do the North County, we've done the North County, the South County. I don't think we've done anything with Golden Gate. The new plant they acquired there are the work they're doing up at the Northeast Regional Facility, but that's brand new also.
So we need some more input. How do you feel, Kevin?
I, I think it's in line. That's my personal opinion.
Okay. What's you?
I'm fine.
I'm fine. That means-
Make a motion then.
That means stay with what we've got. I mean, if he's doing the county work, you know, if they're doing it already, and we gotta get this done.
We do it.
And I, I mean, and we don't have a choice to get it done.
Right.
So I mean, I mean, we're not gonna cut the bill in half if we find somebody else.
Of course not.
So it's, I mean, we're probably nickel and dime in this. We should probably-
Okay, then let's make a motion to authorize that?
I make a motion that we approve the work authorization.
Looks like a-
For the POI permit renewal. For the POI permit renewal.
Paul and Peter?
Right.
I did it all. Right, Dave?
We made a promise to everyone that we would um, bid out and get competitive bids on as much as we could. But I think we're pretty much in line on this. I don't know if it's worth it to involve them trying to find that.
Yeah, it's tricky along the time, but I think for the board's support, this is from backup. The, any new firm, first of all, be a timeframe to try to get one of your sign up, right? And also they'd have to do that together. And I don't know how much that is, if David already has his fingertips that that new group have organized.
Absolutely.
And if the hydrogeologist is the guru of hydrogeology. But they may utilize that same individual because the agencies, as you know, it's a lot of times it's the relationship and credibility. So I think.
Here again, it's no reflection of whole Montez, it's just.
Yeah, I understand.
We're doing our new geologists, but that's all.
I think that's additional support.
There's, there's, there's two hundred hours of work listed here, so I mean, that's quite substantial, so. You know, there's, I mean, to have somebody else come in and. Line all that up and estimate it. It's, and we have to do it by July or whenever the hell we gotta do it.
End of June, I believe.
Right.
So, um, can you bring us up to date on the water tank?
Yes, let me pass this around. This is, this is a draft proposal. I don't have the dollars yet. I'm waiting on some dollars to come in. Plus, uh, one, one question that I do have, and I'm waiting on our lead planner to get back to me. Uh, it is, it has to do with permitting at the, at the plant site itself. Uh, what we're looking at doing, uh, the first part, I, I described the scope of the project. We're, we're looking to go ahead and build a new tank. That tank initially will serve as a water, potable water storage tank. That will allow us to get the repairs done on the existing tank. And then after that, the concept is to convert it over for use as a fire irrigation tank that capacity that Mitch was talking about. He that he, he would really like to have some of that capacity in that system. And then what would be, what we're looking at doing is plumbing it. That in five years, when we need to take the water tank offline again and have detailed inspection done. We would flip it over again and use it for potable water. It'd be basically a, a flip tank. And that's, that's the concept.
How much do you suppose it would cost to switch that, clean that tank and switch it over to be possible? You know what I mean? Each time that you switch it from drinking to?
Well, switching it from drinking to the fire irrigation, we don't need to worry about it too much.
Oh, we're not going to do that?
Well, we would, we would, but that doesn't take a lot of prep time.
Because we're gonna do that when we're building, right?
It's when we flip it the other way, when we need to bring it back for use for potable water. Then what we need to do is go ahead and get it drained down and drain it down by pumping it out into the system. And then getting in there and uh, we've got to clean and disinfect it, make sure it's suitable for potable water use at that point. There, there also would be some costs because if we need to have some air gaps, basically, I'm gonna call them air gaps. What we would do is valve on both sides, have a removable piece of pipe that when we're using it for fire irrigation, there's no way there's a cross connection back over to the water system.
Do you have any idea on need time for that tank?
We, we, it, it needs repair, but uh, it's, it's not like something that needs to be done tomorrow.
No, what I'm guessing is if you ordered it, how long do you think it would take?
Oh, uh. We would probably need to bid it competitively and there's two ways that we can bid it. One would be just uh, basically the steel tank option. I, I'd really like to try to get the, the Aqua Store type tank, the, the blue one that we got up there, similar to that, put in there. Uh, however, bidding it competitively, we may need to open it up for the option of having a concrete tank put in. Again, just to make sure we got some good pricing. Uh, either way, they would have cops on it.
Concrete tanks are quite a bit more money, aren't they?
Usually, usually, uh, especially at this size.
What kind of liner do concrete tanks have in them?
Uh, typically, they're just concrete for the most part. I don't think we really.
Usually just concrete. I do see sometimes now they're spraying that NSF approved epoxy coating and stuff.
Okay, the main reason I ask that is because not everyone switches their tanks back and forth.
Right.
And concrete would be a, or as much.
Of course, material.
More involved, yeah, job to switch it back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we definitely use a coating, an epoxy coating material.
The Aqua Store tank, you talk about metal tank, they'll build that tank in weeks compared to months.
I would like to make a motion that we um, start this process and, and get it going.
Let, let me first finalize a few things and present this back to the next, at the next board meeting. Because I don't have any pricing or anything for you at this point.
Well, I just meant that you would go for when we do the pricing and let's start the process.
I would get in another bid.
Absolutely, that would be part of it.
Well, we'll, we'll bid the construction at this point.
How s- how soon could I get a bid on this?
Getting a price?
Yes.
Uh, from, from us?
From three vendors.
Well, there's, there's two stages. First, it's gonna be.
When you're talking about the state of Florida's Competitive Negotiations Act. Any planning or study activity involving professionals such as landscape architects, engineers, architects, mappers, surveyors. Anything that exceeds thirty-five thousand dollars for planning or studying activity, you have to competitively solicit proposals that are not compensation. If the cost of, correct, and if the cost of construction of a project is more than, it's up to about five hundred thousand now.
Uh, so it's four million now.
It's a four million dollar project.
Four million, I think it may, it's probably a bit more as far as the engineering designs and so forth and studies.
But you may not need, and you may not need to do competitive solicitations, maybe give solicit proposals. But they would not be compensation based.
I, can I, could I get a projected cost from David?
From David? He's your district engineer, sure. Yeah, what I'm only raising is.
Because I have to have some final numbers going into a grant soon. And they don't, they don't have to be final, but I have to have a.
All part.
Analysis of what it's going to cost.
Yeah.
To be able to put in the grant.
Okay, we can provide that for this, give you some budget pricing. We've already got some budget pricing from the vendor. From a vendor to go ahead and put a last line tank there. And we, that, that we can get pretty quickly and so forth. Uh, as far as like this proposal though, I'll go ahead and finalize those numbers for the next board meeting, get those to you. And then we can also work on going ahead and getting some budget pricing put together.
Well, the budget pricing I'm gonna need in the next. Week.
Okay, we probably need to sit down and talk about what exactly you need as far as budget pricing. It sounds like we might need some on the well field also.
I will need a couple items on the well.
Perhaps we can meet after this meeting and go over those items and we can start pulling those together for you.
Okay, that would be good. Okay, let's back up here just for a minute, all right? Because we were talking before, we were talking about replace, getting another um, tank, right?
Yes.
And eliminating some pump. All the pump stations on the canal, so for instance, I think you'll have to add a tank at the plant, probably a pump or two. I'm not an engineer, I don't know, but I assume we need more than just a few pumps that are back there.
Yeah.
But originally, we were fancying, talking about half a million for the tank or something like that. Now you threw out a number of four million.
No, 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 four million has to do with the CCNA requirements.
David, I disagree with you because that's under the continuing contract.
Yes.
Okay.
That's only under the continuing contract section.
Well, no, I meant the whole project. It made it sound like it was gonna be more than a thousand.
No, 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 no.
That was when competitive bidding.
No, that four million is for continuing contracts, not for other construction. We're, we have half a million, well, you're gonna look and give me some budget pricing, but. Supervisor, Christian might know or.
I just need to rid four million dollars to make my refrain like. You know, I mean, so.
No, 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 it's, it's not, construction's not gonna pass that.
And again, that four million only comes from the play for continuing contracts. Okay, not for individual, I know, that's why your firm could do it if you're the district engineer under continuing contract, right? But if the board were to throw out, solicit proposals for engineering firm services or anybody else. Then if the construction cost exceeds about four hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand, then you have to go to the CCNA. So I don't know if you have an estimate across.
Wait a minute, wait, back there. CCNA?
West Coast Competitive Negotiation Act, that's where the board submits proposals from engineers, architects, mappers, surveyors. And it's a qualification space. Concept, they submit their qualifications, the board ranks the top three, negotiates compensation with the top one. And if the board cannot come to a resolution or agreement on compensation, then they go to the second rank, then they go to the third. That's how professional engineering, architect, landscape architect, service provider, but. Omar Tez is a district engineer under continuing contract, which is another whole category. That's why David's firm could do without having. What have you got to do?
Yeah, and, and for instance, like if the construction cost was gonna be over four billion dollars on any one particular project. Then you'd have to go out and seek additional proposals.
Okay, so you're, you, you're saying here that if we didn't have a district engineer, right, we'd have to do this every single time?
Correct, you can, you have a choice. You could either, it's under four million, you could just say, David, if you go ahead, your firm can find.
No, 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 I mean, say, say we did.
You wanted to use another firm, yeah, well, did not have a district engineer.
Say we didn't have a district engineer, I mean, that we didn't have one I'm.
That's not how I would recommend, quite frankly, for a situation because uh, if you did not have a district engineer. And if you engage in a construction project or activity that was over the threshold, I think it's about five. What is it? It's a number that you increase the cost by. The engineer's new director building cost in Texas is, I'll keep wondering. Uh, then you have to go out and competitively solicit proposals for engineering services.
So it's gonna delay everything, it's, everything's gonna.
Yeah, at least sixty days.
Each time.
So if I'm understanding this right, we can ask him, go ahead and do our engineering. When it comes to actually purchasing the tank and doing the work, we need to get competitive bids.
Yes, by the cost of that, yes.
And, and I, and I would prefer we would do that anyway.
Probably, but do this.
Yes.
That's what we would do. That's what I'm thinking.
Any other questions on that?
No, so next month I'll bring a firm price.
Okay.
And I'll talk to you between.
That's all I have unless the board has some questions, concerns, issues?
Reports.
Um. You were going to send out a master plan. Did you ever get that sent out? On the swales, Dave, some areas are permitted, others are not. There's a master plan available. Um, have we already talked about that or is there a master plan?
I think we've talked about it in general. I'm trying to remember the. Trying to remember what, I said something, I can, I can, I can quickly gather that up as far as a.
And where I'm getting this from was uh, the minutes of the meeting from January twentieth. Uh.
I think I was gonna get.
Dave will send a plan to supervisor Hanson, and I'm just wondering if that was done.
No, I have not caught up with supervisor Hanson.
Can we do that?
Sure, I've got that noted. I, I picked that up too when I was looking at it and said.
All right.
That was something that hadn't been done yet.
Yeah, all right.
Fortunately, my, my life is getting back to some normalcy.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I've done fifty hours of reading.
All right. Okay, um, anything else for engineering? Anybody out there got any questions for, for engineer? All right.
Mr. Chairman, would you want to go back to the management side?
Whatever, that's fine.
I think you might be helping out, but we'll still make Kevin's stand, I would suggest.
Okay.
I'll be on his list for a long time. Um, what I have been, uh. The Joel firm provided a form of agreement. I made some edits to it. He came back with some responses and then I reviewed the responses and agreed with some of them and disagreed with others and he accepted that. We have a form of an agreement. I think you've seen it, Mr. McNamee. And so it's recommended for approval from the standpoint of form and legal sufficiency with a couple minor, I'll call it grammatical edits or edits. As far as formatting and then the E verified language. And the operative primary, I just sort of read from the highlights, if that's okay, Chairman.
Yeah.
The agreement commences and the effective date, which I would suggest be the eighteenth of February. And then it terminates September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And then it automatically news for one year term commencing October first, twenty twenty-three. And then automatically news for every year thereafter. Uh, unless either party gives notice of these sixty days notice in advance of the termination. There's a, there's a little title there also. Then it talks about the conditions, the usual obligations to perform all the services incidental to district manager under one ninety. And uh, and also says directed by the board for various activities. Protect, maintain, repair, replace the district's properties and assets. Uh, provided by statute, provided in the agreement or resolution of the board. Subject to very, uh, section five, talks about below limitation expenditures to purchase services and services like supplies, pay bills. Pay necessary insurance, prepare meeting notices, report to notices required. Uh, and all those items as regards to typical obligation for the meetings. Uh, maintain the fund accounting system, budget, prepare a budget and timely submit the approved budget to Cuyahoga County and property appraisal. Uh, and then accept a rule preparation. And maintain the official books and records and records of proceedings. Deposits, keep all funds in qualified public depositories, which is required by statute. That limitations on expenditure, the, uh, except there's otherwise specified by the board's resolution. The manager will have the authority to enter the contracts for maintenance or repair of district facilities. Uh, if the maintenance repair cost does not exceed five thousand dollars for the maintenance or repair event. The total maintenance or repair cost paid to any one contractor does not exceed twenty thousand dollars in the aggregate during the then fiscal year. And the proposed maintenance or repair cost falls within approved budget line item. So I think, and then emergency repairs could be performed. I've always taken the position district manager has obligation. To, it, it, it's ours is duties to protect district assets in case of emergencies. He has the ability to perform, engage necessary contractors for emergency services and typically consultation with. You know, the man, the chair and then ratification by the board. And that's important also for FEMA, uh, that's have a resolution that approves that, kind of emergency expenditure. Because they want to see the board approve the entering into contracts for emergencies or ratified by the board at public meeting. Uh, FEMA has kicked out reversal requests for not having that authority. So we just got tucked out of way to make sure we take care of that. Our relationship with parties, insurance, special liability insurance of many dollars, we need additional insured. Uh, commercial general liability coverage and everything else is. The, the expense, let's see here, seventy-five hundred dollars per month, I think, is the fee. And Kevin, are there any additional fees, additional seventy-five hundred dollar fee?
Uh, the only thing would be if the board desired to have extra services, whether it be project management, field management, anything that the board decided they wanted to add. As a, as, as a texture.
So about utility billing, how's that gonna be?
Uh, utility billing services, uh, we've already met with a vendor. That will just pass those, so it's pass the cost along of uh. Of putting together the, the utility bills, so that'll just be a pass-through expense. There, there will be no, no profit or administrative fee to our company. It'll just be a pass-through of the actual cost.
Do you have a number for what they're gonna charge to do that?
Uh, we don't yet, but uh, they haven't given it to us yet, but we'll have it soon.
Because we need to do that, of course.
Exactly, yeah. We actually, we're talking with three different firms, so.
Yeah, we can just make sure that that's in the specifications as far as scope to engage necessary vendors to uh, provide your generate the line.
So how are we gonna, how are we gonna go about getting that done before the next meeting? Because we're gonna need to send out water bills.
We'll have to put together, we'll, we'll have to get the calls and I don't know if there's a way that we want to address that to, to, to today or we, we just. We have, we're just not getting the agreement done.
Absolutely.
So uh, we'll have to get that as, as soon as we can and.
Well, I guess the question is, do you have any, any range of dollar numbers for the utility billing vendor? Is it five thousand per billing or ten thousand per billing or?
I don't, I can try to find that out in the interim while we work on something else.
Well, yeah, I think that might be one, because the board could say if you authorize to engage a vendor to utility billing and not exceed X number of dollars per billing cycle.
So if we want to get that done, here's, here's a thought. Can we um, can we agree to have one of the board members work directly with them and see what the uh. Uh, the costs of the, the billing will be and authorize that board member to um. Make that happen before the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that cost.
No?
No, what I would suggest would be if Kevin can get some numbers now, so we have the board has an idea of magnitude of that. And, and again, I think it's sort of have that. and 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 again, I think it's sort of have that, that the board can say not to exceed number of X or Y or whatever it would be.
What was the bill that cost us now?
Uh, it's, I think it was twenty-four hundred. But there's more than just sending out bills, preparing and sending them. There's daily uh customer service. Uh, we laid off our billing clerk and so I'm handling all the calls and I probably get ten calls a a week. Uh, it's applications for new service, it's, it's throwing out a termination form, it's the ACHs. It's uh checking Mitch's guys goes through, they send us their readings and then we have to go through all of them and then uh send them back to Mitch for rechecks. And uh, you know, so I mean, it's just, it's not as simple as what I think you're getting this for, there's a lot of work there.
I have another customer that just hired a billing company in the rate that they're paying is four dollars and twenty-five cents per meter per month.
Four twenty-five?
Four twenty-five, that's to answer the phone calls, um, take care of the reading, of course, we read and tune the information and then they print, send out the bills.
How many meters do we have, do you know?
Almost eight hundred.
Eight hundred?
Mid forty is about ten thirty, it's two hundred.
Do they also take money and transmit it to the?
Not to exceed four grand.
Why not extend Cal or Mike?
Mitch, no, I'll thank you. Mitch, I think, Mitch, I think Mitch has claimed to chairman that, that company that they have an open client with that they, that entity does the billing, receives the funds and then transmits the funds to the utility, is that correct?
That's correct.
All for that same cost?
That's what I understood, it was four twenty-five per meter per month.
And then handles customer service, like we just talked about.
In conjunction with us, like right now, Cal and I, Cal gets some calls and he sends them to me because we have to go out and verify and then ultimately, we have calls all day long that are about billing that we don't know, so then I have to pass those off to Cal, so it kind of works back and forth, but yes.
Mitch, how big is that community that has the four twenty-five?
Uh, twelve hundred customers. Twelve? Twelve hundred customers, there are some condos that are billed like one bill for eight units.
They're masturbators?
Yeah, masturbators, so I don't know the exact number.
But this number is thirty-four hundred dollars.
And the the customer that I just, that I'm talking about, they're only sewer only, they're not water, they're only sewer.
Yeah, so that's quite, that's a lot.
But that that's just one, I I don't, that's the only one I'm familiar with.
It is, is that how sewer only is all water meter reading?
It is all water meter, yeah, so they tell me supplies the water and they may supply the reading over.
Kevin, would you be able to take calls for this specific billing?
We uh, I think our expectation was that sits and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mitch, that the readings were done last week.
Yes.
And that the last billing will probably be done prior to us taking over, then we would take over from there, I understand that's not what's happening. But uh, that's, that's where we are now, is we're awaiting a proposal from the companies uh that we talked with Mitch about to to get quotes, I would assume we're going to get quotes similar to what he's telling us, but we don't have it yet, uh, we're more than willing to do whatever we need to do. I'm just, I'm just going to be careful giving out the number.
Cal offered to prep and possibly print.
Yeah, we'll.
You would print, okay, prep and print the bills, all we have to do is mail them out, and we have this billing.
Well, stuff them too, they should have stuffed them, they should have put postage on them.
And then I think hopefully part of that process would be also to get electronic data of all those bills so that when payments are received.
That's part of the record.
Yeah.
Right.
So uh, and one of the reasons that we'd agree, number one, you asked, Dan, you know, that's why we're doing it, but Mitch, with the issue on the bad reading from the testing laboratory, uh, asked if we could put a message on the bill and I'm I'm not sure anyone could pick that up at this late hour, so we're going to put that on, direct into the website and then give the eight hundred bills to uh to whoever you designate.
Cal, would that, just would that bill indicate how payments are made?
How was it made now, was it, the payments made to Port of the Islands?
The payments are made to a post office box.
So as far as the payee though, if it's by check?
Yeah, no, it's made to Port of the Islands, okay.
Catherine?
Are are we planning on going to water bills every month or keeping them at every two months?
As far as I know, we're at two months.
Every two months.
Every two months.
Because Mitch was talking about four twenty-five a month.
Her her bills, that utility bills monthly, so.
And the bills might go out every few months, but the work is current.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm looking at for this particular timeframe where we're changing over. If Cal printed them and we had to stuff them and mail them. That's something we could probably get done.
We can get it done.
I'm sure we can, right.
Does that work?
Yeah, why don't you, gotta do what we gotta do.
I do, absolutely, right, so you would print them and then tell us?
Okay, we'll give you eight hundred bills, uh, if what you're going to have to do though is drive to Fort Myers uh, because that's the, we don't know what post office box other than the one that is currently being used. So somebody has to pick up those utility bills, it's something I do every day.
Can we do a change of address on that?
Uh, you gotta get in the post office box.
What do you make?
Yeah, I, we're just set it up, I, if you can set it up like quickly, we can make the change on the bill where it'll go to a different, there's also a return envelope in there. So it's the bill, the return envelope and the envelope and the envelope, the the return envelope has the address or the post office.
So you, we got to establish a post office box for us and then we'll just do a change of order and we don't have to go through any of that.
And what about the auto pay?
That will turn over all the records, but that's something that somebody's got to do, they've got to get with the, with people and get their bank accounts, get authorization.
So basically, there's going to be no auto pay this next time?
Uh, I I'm not sure, I, I can't.
We, I. Because my bill says right out of doing that, pay this bill.
Yeah, but I guess the auto pay is to a bank account, right? And the bank account is the same account, we'll maintain that, so it doesn't sound like that could be an issue.
Okay, all right.
Correct, it's still the same bank.
Okay.
And uh, I can volunteer Zach when he comes in every day, he lives in Fort Myers, pick up the mail, I'm just kidding.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with this then?
And I guess, Mr. Chairman, it would be, I apologize, that, the token motion would be to authorize the chair to sign the management agreement with Durrell uh, management grouping with the changes that I mentioned, with the recognition that there might need to be an amendment or addendum to it at a future time, as soon as possible, to address the building lender.
You're comfortable with the agreement?
Yes, sir.
You're comfortable with the agreement?
Yes, sir.
I'm comfortable with the agreement. Make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the agreement as provided by our attorney.
Authorize the chair to sign, yes.
I'm sorry, who authorized the chair to sign?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Cal, thank you for printing those, by the way, so I'll take care of that, appreciate that.
Field managers' report?
Uh, there are a. I'm assuming that you brought along some resolutions to authorize the signature cards and the transfer to Durrell.
Yes.
Uh, the resolutions.
Yes, I think, I think Kevin does, you want to take a look at that, can I? I looked at them and it sure, we could form a few comments on it.
I try to back over there right now.
Okay, that's a wish to the bank account and then a resolution to designate its assistance.
You have extra copy? Oh. Uh, yeah, the first resolution is to uh, oh, there's actually two resolutions. The first resolution is one, because we are now appointing additional individuals uh as treasurer, as assistant treasurer, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash O two. We, I I'd suggest we just, it's designating a chair or vice chair, secretary, assistant secretaries, treasurer and assistant treasurer before the Allen's Community Improvement District. And what I would suggest is that the chair and the vice chair, everybody else remained the same, all we're going to add is the treasurer and assistant treasurer and Kevin, uh, who would be the treasurer? Is your suggestion?
All right, secretary, treasurer.
The treasurer. Definitely. Neil or you or assistant treasurer?
I think both would be the assistant treasurer.
Okay, who would be the treasurer, who's your, who's the current treasurer? Uh, I, okay, specifically to district manager, so it's Neil and then Kevin Carter is assistant treasurer. So uh the chair, vice chair, and then the same secretary, Cal's the secretary, correct? I, so uh, that would be Neil, I would suggest. And then assistant secretary would be all board members who are not chair or vice chair. And then also, I think, anybody, you want Christopher to be assistant secretary, Christopher? You're involved?
Uh, you have to give myself.
You're sorry?
You have to meet on there as well.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I I I don't think we need that person.
No, okay, so it would be, the current officers, current chair, current vice chair, Neil Dorrell is secretary, all of the board members other than the chair and vice chair is assistant secretary, Kevin Carter is assistant secretary, Neil Dorrell is treasurer and Kevin Carter is assistant treasurer. I'm good with that. And it would be a resolution twenty twenty-three dash O two and we recommend, uh, that's available, the adopt and approve by the board. If need a motion, we second.
I make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two O two as outlined.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next resolution is twenty twenty-three dash O one. Due to certain. Uh, the management group is directed to establish a local bank account in which banking.
Uh, we use First Foundation Bank, uh, makes our variety increases, but uh, the interest rates are really low at that bank. I really will share that information with the board at that time, but that's the bank that we.
Why, why, why don't you put Valley in there, which is their current, and just change the signature card? And then they can switch it whenever you want.
I think that's a suggestion.
I, I doubt it, but that the Valley doesn't charge any big fees and, you know, they they pay interest on your checking which is a little over three percent right now, I don't, I haven't seen anything.
And we can leave that alone for now, because we can change it later.
I think going as a broker right now, so they are the, the bank, well, the ACH payments are made.
Very good, very good.
Pardon? Yeah, I agree. And it says the district chair, treasurer, assistant treasurer should be appointed signatories on the account. And so that way we have the new treasurer and assistant treasurer, so that will be on the signature cards. And take the back of the passport, that's, can Cal, any other comments or suggestions?
We can make adjustments as we go.
You can have a resolution subsequent, yes.
I have a question on on the agreement, the agreement with Durrell uh does state that they're the custodian of the bank?
Yes.
Okay, and we will ship all the records to their office?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion for that?
Well, make a motion, we accept that.
Resolution?
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash O one.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, what I would suggest, uh, can we get back to the office if you could? Uh, prepare one, fill in all the names, uh, email it to the chair and then the, you know, should also email it to me so we can include it in what record I've seen. Yeah, but email it to the chair for the chair to sign and then the chairman can send a color version scan back to uh Kevin so that it can be signed by Neil, the secretary, or Kevin, his assistant secretary, and then give a copy to Cal. Both of you, I'm sure, I think that would be appropriate.
All right.
And then, Cal, you, have you provided Neil or Kevin the contact information to the bank? Bills from the.
Uh, Bill, I, I can send it.
If you could, you have the grid after.
I know, thank you.
Actually, it's uh, Heller and she's at Neigles.
Oh, good.
Um, we have any idea what's going on with our area installation?
The uh Chris, uh, because they're still waiting on it, but.
My question is, can we stop this process? I don't know why we're, I mean, we're going to be into the rainy season before these things are even going to land. I mean, we've only been able to get conduit in the ground to one, to one uh system so far. Is, have we gotten money put out there that we would not be able to get back?
I couldn't research that, get back to you. Or I can that information over to, uh, if the board would like to stop it, uh, stop it contingent upon a full reporting of what has or hasn't been paid.
Who's the contractor on this, you know?
Uh, I want to say it's Solitude.
Solitude?
Yeah.
The total difference is like twenty grand, right?
That's what it's about, that.
Yeah.
How much have we paid?
I don't know, you paid anything other than the electrician to hook up the electric.
You ran a conduit, it was all here, right?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm not sure.
It sounded like you ran a conduit, put the electric, isn't in yet, because the conduit's not even in on the rest of the pump.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm offering, just in combined, unless, you know, we put some serious money into it, I mean, we put ten grand into it already, well, then that's different.
Exactly.
If we haven't put it, if all we've done is paid an electrician.
Can you make a motion that?
What kind of motion?
That if we don't have a lot of costs out there, that.
Less than what? Any deal with the electrician cost?
This can't be a ton.
All right, so. Solitude, you said was the name of the company?
Yeah, I I don't think Solitude could be anything.
So that means all.
But they're not the electrician.
That means all we've done is paid the electrician, right?
As far as I know, yeah, they are the air raiders and if they, if they are, they're on the foot, on their foot.
I can't, I can't believe they wouldn't allow a fifty percent upfront. You know what I mean? Once they start ordering.
Well, Solitude's a huge company, they're national, they probably are twenty billion dollars and half that.
The toll of this is, we, this has been going on for months. And.
Stop it, so.
I I would be in favor of that, I don't, Kevin?
You're talking about putting the areas in.
Stopping the area, putting them in.
Put it whole.
Yeah, I mean, we, we haven't spent any money.
For the review.
No, we have to, we have to stop, so, so.
And we could always go back at a later date and buy them again, you know.
Now, the Congress too, if we.
One, on one, one.
So we only, we only ran line for one?
So you've got, there's three.
Right, but we've only.
They've only done one.
One, we've only, right.
May I make a suggestion? Um, the gentleman that does the spraying and ponds and maintains them, Bob Lufa from the River Garden, I would suggest talking to him and getting his input as to how he feels about the air raiders going in, just a suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, well, I've been here seventeen years and I don't see a need for it, so.
So you want to make a motion that we stop this?
Yeah, I made the motion that we hold off on the areas pending that, uh as long as we haven't already paid for the units.
Right.
You know? And if we've paid for the units, we'll have to readdress it.
Absolutely. Second, anybody?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 District managers' report?
Uh, okay, well, we've got the financials and uh always you're in great financial position, I wish either community said three million dollars in. I wish either community had three million dollars in reserve. Uh, nothing jumps out at me. It, uh, now, these are, you know, they've even looked at, audited, whatever, by a CPA. So that's the January. The we'll be turning over, what type of software do you use, Kevin?
Um, accounting software is QuickBooks.
Okay. Um, we'll, I, it's probably adaptable. We use a pretty sophisticated municipal accounting software. And I think we can give you everything in Excel, for all the records, we can give it to you in Excel. But they'll be preparing your February financials. Uh, we'll give them everything up until the point you stop.
Okay.
Okay. So. Are you looking to Tony for?
No, I was background noise.
Oh, um, so we'll have that. We have all of the audit files that are ready. We've sent to, and the auditors, we've sent everything to them. So, you know, we'll provide the information right up until, but you'll have everything in an audit file that you can use to, uh, communicate with them and get the audit completed. Uh, but the audit is also everything we've done. It goes through the end of September.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any questions on the financials I can answer?
No. Did you have any questions for me to ask? No. I don't think we should go into it. All right. The only other thing, the FEMA reimbursement, you'll.
Well, still on the financials, you need to accept them. But, um, the other thing is several bills are still being held, the engineers, the attorneys, and ours. Uh, ours by contractors who immediately upon termination, and that's tomorrow.
Um, make a motion to pay the the outstanding bills that we have?
Second. You just got to sign, I'm sure.
Yeah, but we're operating, operating.
All right.
I want to, I want everybody to say, yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Cal, you can go ahead.
We'll.
Bring everybody up to date?
Uh, yes, we'll bring everybody, all all of them that we have. What about the last batch that we sent you? Um, are those all good?
I believe so.
I don't think none of them. So we'll, we'll pay all of the bills today that are outstanding. And then you'll just get the next ones as they come in. And we'll forward everything from our AP file to you.
The only one that I really have a big problem with is that Carl's, uh, that does our, uh, waste disposal, our, hey, all our sludge away. Um, and I was talking to Mitch the other day, and he says we take about twenty truckloads a year out of here. And I was looking at the last bill, and they have a, a diesel fuel surcharge that was damn near a thousand dollars. Um, and it it it's just way out of whack.
Where's your truck in it, too?
India?
Yeah.
Well, it would surprise me if it isn't Dr. Charlotte Kniey.
Well, anyway, what Mitch says that it's way out of whack. They're trying to come up with a better way that they can, their company can be able to do it. But, um, he says we can only use that company with the permitting that we've got. And basically, they've got us over a barrel, and they're just gouging us on this.
Yeah, there there's not too many companies that do that type of work.
Yeah.
Carl's one that most people are using.
Yeah, and and I, he was saying other communities have voiced the same concerns that these, uh, these fuel surcharges have just gotten ridiculous. Um, you can compare to the people who bring in our chemicals, it's six dollars, you know, when they bring in a truck. Um, but I think that's something that we should be addressing in the future and working with Mitch to to come up with a a a better solution because, uh, it's it's. And and you can call them and complain, but it, I guess it just doesn't do much good. So anyway, I just wanted to.
But a fuel surcharge is not unusual. It's, uh, the Beatles were having fuel surcharge.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, almost every one of your vendors.
We're talking about a hundred and fifty-three dollars a truckload for fuel surcharge.
Pit truck. It's got, what, a six thousand, Mitch left, I think it's got a six thousand gallon tank on it.
Yeah.
That they come in and they pump it and, you know, it probably burns.
Same, be bigger.
Yeah, why?
I can, there there's just a lot of people with, uh, fuel charges, very.
I'm not saying the fuel, that they shouldn't have a fuel charge. I'm saying a hundred and fifty-three dollars. I own semis, I know what it costs to drive semi down the road. That hundred and fifty-three dollars for not, that's not to pay for the diesel, that's just the surcharge above and beyond what we're paying for. It, that's ridiculous.
Maybe, Kevin, you can get an adjustment on that reduction or.
Maybe we have to look at the contract and see what the basis.
You know, but yeah, a hundred and fifty-three dollars a truckload is, as a surcharge, is ridiculous. But anyway, moving on.
Okay, uh, and then I just, uh, this is my last meeting, I just wanted to, uh, you know, thank the community previous board, this board for, uh, Captain, you be here, it's, I've been here quite a while, and, uh, I certainly have appreciate, or I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. Water plant, we restructured financing, none of that was, uh, and the sale of parcel thirteen. And, uh, none of that, uh, we charged you extra for. It's, uh, FEMA, uh, everything, you know, now this year we charge it for FEMA, but none of those things were ever an extra cost.
We appreciate that. Um, did you want to? Did you want to mention anything on the twenty twenty-four budget schedule?
Uh, the twenty twenty-four budget schedule, that's just what we put together, but, uh, uh, they will probably want to adjust it. Uh, the budget schedule that's in your packet is based off of the meetings that you have. Uh, unless you're, you're, you need to adopt a budget by June fifteenth, not a final budget, but a proposed budget. And when you adopt that, that limits the.
Prove it.
Yeah.
You need to prove it, then you adopt it later. Prove it for purposes of holding the public here.
Okay, I didn't say that.
You'll keep it straight. We're good.
I I I said adopt, and then I changed it.
I hear the change, sorry.
Semantics, we'll get it done.
Uh, so anyhow, that is a schedule that's that we would have proposed to you that, uh, based on getting it done with no extra meetings. But you might want some extra meetings.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, um, Mr. Tony?
Uh, yes, sir. We can't without going into the the substance of the conversation because it was considered confidential and humble settlement discussion. Mr. McNamee, myself, or more, my partner, not the perimeral for the record. And, uh, that by Zoom, that got cut off way too early, and that was very frustrating. But, uh, Mr. Preppin and his attorney. Uh, and I think basically we sort of agreed to disagree at the present time, but I still think there might be an opportunity. I don't know, Mr. McNamee, how you feel. Result.
I I, you know, I know their their attorney, and I listened to what he said. I was disappointed that he didn't seem to have a grasp on.
Not going to the detail of what we're talking about.
Um, sorry. I I think that he wants to take this to court. I'll be pleasantly surprised if he doesn't, but I think he wants to go the whole way.
Okay. And and right now, we don't believe, we, we don't believe, I think Mr. McNamee will agree, tell me if I'm wrong. We don't need a close session for the next board meeting, not for the foreseeable future.
I don't believe so. All right. Anything else?
Let's see, uh, form of resolution, establishing various committees. Uh, have you all thought about, again, the the types of committees and the scope? I have the template, I think you all saw the template that I had, I handed it out. And if you just tell me, maybe come to the next board with the list of each individual, what committee they think should be established, that they would be a liaison to, uh, what scope they want for the committee, what name they want to give the committee, and how many members I think should be on the committee, five or or seven? Because, as you know, sometimes it's difficult to get a four if you have too many people on a committee.
Right.
Uh, some may be three, some may be five. Uh, and that, I think, might be a good document also to be included in the agenda packet where those ideas could, you know, each board member could send that to the manager and put that in the book so the board sees ahead of time what the concepts are for scope, nature, and core.
Okay.
And we also, we have, I'll call it a fill in the blank, sort of template for the resolutions that could be easily, uh, crafted after the board gives direction.
Okay, are we crafting these to be information gathering committees, or are we crafting these?
That's the question, I I I suggest that be detailed on how you believe a particular commission will organize.
I would like to see all our committees crafted as a information gathering committee.
Information only.
Yeah, I understand that, and recognize those are extremely difficult to keep within the bounds of the sunshine law because they tend to wander off into having meetings where they start making recommendations, and that's not the role, and then they have to have, then they do have to comply with sunshine law. That's, that's the difficulty, and that.
As a community, I think if we agree to go to committees and get input from the public and from the committee members, right, here, to schedule all those committee meetings, um, in this place or in another meeting facility, and advertise them, through the papers, everything.
No, they they don't have to be advertised in the paper, the committee meetings, no, they can be posted on the district website.
And they could be at your house.
As long as a public, as long as you have plenty of tea and crap that's available for anybody that wants to come.
Doing information gathering, correct?
Well, it's information gathering, then you don't have the same issues. But again, human beings being what they are, human nature being what they are, it's very difficult without constant monitoring guidance to make sure they stay solely on information. And the information gathering is, I observe potholes in the road. These are where the potholes are located. I found this company, they're located in Wisconsin. Now, I found this company in Wisconsin, we recommend you use them. Then you're off to the recommendation advisory. So it's, it's, you know, if it's simply a, this committee is a road, and their goal is my walk, ride, bike, whatever you want to do, that they make notes about road conditions and then send them to the manager, that's one thing. As opposed to the committee members then start saying, hey, we recommend you fix this one, we recommend you do that side. Now you're in the advisory. That's where the difficulty.
What? That, that, well, that seems pretty complicated to me, and that's, like you said, that's not human nature. They're gonna, they're gonna bring stuff up and might come up with solutions at the same time. So it makes more sense, I, I don't know about this committee thing, I mean, it it sounds good, you know, say you want the committee.
Yeah.
But why can't they just bring us the information once a month?
That's what I'm saying.
Just let them bring it here. Just bring it to us, just bring it to us.
Well.
Or not as a committee, though.
Not as a group, though, be individuals.
Just individuals, yeah, you see something, bring it in.
Okay.
Because otherwise, it's, it's, it's too narrow.
I think it's expensive time consuming, it's awful opportunities.
And I don't know.
People just snipe it, and that's the whole.
Yeah.
Anybody that does what they're doing is going to start saying sunshine law violations, and then that's just, we we end up going down.
So, so the interest, in the interest of time, because I want us out of here by now. Let's table any more discussion about committees till a later date. Um, so then we're on to old business lawsuit update, I guess you just did that, right?
Sure.
Parking, parking signs in tow away?
Might all have nothing changed, so I don't have anything worth that.
No.
Resuming parcel thirteen in your agenda packet was the latest seminal, I'm sorry.
Well, the parking signs that are.
We're at now.
Yeah, oh, okay. Yeah, I thought you were bypassing.
I'm sorry.
Write that now.
I was rushing.
Now, well, do you have an idea, uh, idea on that?
Um, just ask the marina, I don't know why we need them, that's, that's what you're saying, right?
Absolutely.
To pull them out.
Sunrise K even.
Right.
The marina entrance, any place you have landscaping, it's ridiculous, that parking, and it all has to do with people going in their driveway or down.
Right.
On a road.
I think, I think at the marina, in the median by the marina, because what happens on the weekend is the marina fills up.
Sure.
And they don't all go down to the other parking lot. So then you catch one occasionally that's parking in the median or whatever with their trailer. I think right along that section, we we need the signs.
So there's, going down the sections, you have the one that has the three shady ladies, and then you don't have anything that has parking signs. Then I think you have the free open field, you know, that's going into the marina and the firehouse in that area. Then from the marina entrance back to where the, um, water irrigation clock is, there's nothing there. Okay, but once you hit that irrigation clock right before sunrise K, just about at the beginning of three thirty-three, technically it's sunrise K, not important, K, the fenced area, from that point, from that clock on back down to the end of Newport, it's ridiculous. But you do have that one span that is next to the marina, that there's nothing there. So two things, you can either put in some kind of landscaping in that area, okay, so people won't park like it would continue then from the marina on that, or put the signs in that area where there is no landscaping.
Yeah, just pull the signs from the south.
Can I make a quick suggestion here? When I meet with you on those.
Sure. Absolutely.
Why don't you and I go and you tell me what signs you don't like? And what I'm going to suggest is, just in the sake of time, that I go and pull the signs out that we probably shouldn't need, and we store those over at the water treatment plant. And then, um, if we have issues, we can go and reinstall them, it won't cost us anything to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
How's the board feeling about that? Okay, all right. Rezoning of thirteen.
Uh, in your agenda packet was the latest recent middle, I believe.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if you have any questions with regards to that, but I also have stand out in today's.
Lindsay, one moment. For the, uh, notice of the neighborhood information meeting, you grabbed the chair.
Was that on his thing?
Yes.
Okay.
It's scheduled for March seventh at the Port of the Islands Resort Conference, who have extra copies.
Yes.
It was in today's newspaper.
Can we, uh, can we get this noticed and put on our, on our website as soon as possible? So that the community is, uh, made well in advance of what's going to happen on here? There's going to be a hearing at the county, dealing with the.
Whatever, it's going to be held here at the county's room.
Okay.
It's neighborhood information, uh, for the rezoning, which is required under the county's land development code. And, uh, it's has to be either audiotape or videotape, or you can do your own audiotaping or videotaping if you wish. Typical will be, there will be the attorney, the land planner, uh, county staff, uh, making the presentation as to the rezoning, and then uh, any, the public can ask any questions they want. And any commitments made at the neighborhood information meeting, called a NIM, uh, uh, will be commitments that will be in the documents, as far as rezoning. So if portions are asked and the local makes a commitment, I think that's the mission of your honor, Mr. Fairchester, will say.
When you say here, you don't need one, oh, we don't worry.
Correct, yes, Kevin, it's right there, I printed extra copies out, it's on the table, that was in today's statement, Daily News. Uh, and not many people get the print version anymore, but I saw it in the online version of the show.
Now, was there a reason that we weren't going to have it here?
That's up to the applicant to set the location.
And, uh, work in tow does not allow anyone other than CID and residents of work in tow.
Lindsay, you want to state your name and?
Sir, I'm Lindsay Case, and I'm a purchaser of parcel thirteen, and I have the adjacent two point six nine site that is now assembled, that's a given parcel. So many things from the county and their piece of land and what they're doing. I have submitted according to the board's, uh, consent for me in December, as the new board had consented, and I submitted to the county for the zone change. We received comments, I don't have that memo here, but, uh, and they were pretty perfunctory comments, comments that are just kind of something that my team, the engineering team of Brady Minor needed to kind of, uh, re-brief, they resubmitted them. And then we also have to have this meeting, but it is in, what?
March seventh.
March seventh. Right, so I won't be there. I've got my best team here, but, uh, that, after that meeting, then, of course, as he said, the any additional public comments will be brought into the documents. And I don't have much more to say other than, um, we're, we're on full throttle. I have directed my engineers to do some of the pre-design for some of the relocations, which you're aware of, David, perhaps. And, uh, if there's any other comments, I'm here for that.
Why do we need rezoning?
Because the zoning only allows. Because the zoning only allows the resort, uh, town home type of problem. And the board was very, and I thought the community and myself were all really very welcoming to the hundred million residential lots.
What are the size of lots?
They're whatever, we're on that diagram.
Yep, that diagram I saw was seventy-five by forty.
That might be what some of them are.
But they won't, they won't fit, you won't fit a fifteen hundred square foot house if you, depending on what the, uh, lot lines are and the, in the setbacks are.
All that's to be submitted, see, right now, we don't have, the, the, the process doesn't ask for lot dimensions, it only asks for use.
Okay.
As soon as the zone, and they say, okay, zoning's okay, but it's not completely arbitrary, and the maps that you saw may have been earlier revisions, were never refined, but I haven't, we, the team didn't spend, I haven't spent money on doing a flat design because trying to get the zone approved. And so, yeah, it frustrates me that we can't, I mean, if I was a man, I was spending money on engineers, we would have had everything ready and submitted today and ready to record tomorrow. But because the county needs, you know, I think their rule is thirty days to reply. Tom, listen to that. I think as you submit, and they have thirty days to reply, then you submit again, and then they go to a public meeting, and then they come back, and then this, and then I have to submit comments again.
Is there, is there anything that we as a board can do to help move this process along for you?
I just wouldn't understand the, not the, the political side at all, other than just, um, I think if you're familiar with the county commissioner and the other persons that are related to the county, just share your input, and please, if you have any issues, I know some still may have ideas that were coming up in the contract area, but the thing I love about this deal, this investment, this community is, we spent six months, and I spent fifty thousand dollars just signing contracts that we closed on. And because we spent that much money upfront, we did deal and think about the engineering, the GIS, all these issues that kind of have come up, and because this issues, before this new development, weren't able to quantify all the needs that would come, but now we've kind of seen what are all the needs, you've learned about it with the GIS process recently, and I would, and in addition to the hurricane that just went through there, they were telling me the day the hurricane's gone through, you're gonna have to raise your site. So, I already had here that day one, and we were gonna, we have to raise it at least a foot higher than what we were gonna do, and that's an engineering thing, but as the processes that you're working on, if you need to have integrative conversation with my, with the engineer on it, they're at the table every day with Mr. Brady Minor there. I have them funded so that they can deal with any question your team brings up. So it's not like, hey, they're calling to tell us we need to do another study on this. I said, god damn it, I don't have the money for that. Hey, I'm here to fund this deal, I'm here to close the deal and get a hundred and nine lots built, and I'm here to give you the confidence, and I'll be here every meeting I need to be. And I flew in last night, I flew it out tomorrow, but I'll be happy to stay a month. And I do wanna be out here.
Are you gonna, are you gonna have a chance to go over to the, to the website?
Yes, absolutely.
So, maybe if there's anybody in here, he's gonna be over at the, at the water treatment plant? If you got some questions you have for him, that'd be a great time to do it.
Yeah, and I'm happy that I put three million dollars here, I'm committed, my whole life is here. If I were to die, my network is here, and my family will produce the output you need, so it's all good.
Lindsay?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any input to the county as to what they do with that parcel of land that sits between us and you?
No, I, I have told them multiple times, but not formally, I did it in the email. I said, I'd be willing to pay you the exact price for your land, and I'll pay it to this any time. And the thing about it is their land didn't have water commitments, their land has no water allocated. So, that's a whole nother, probably three hundred thousand dollars of revenue to the district the second they wanna come in and do twenty, twenty units on it. I have planned their site, I have it fully integrated into a plan. If somehow the county does capitulate and want to sell to this program, I can whip out a plan in five minutes, and I mean, not five minutes, five seconds, that shows how we would use it if it were part of ours system. And it's very congruent with the things that are in the district plan.
Thank you very much, um, those kind of questions we can ask out.
Yeah, anytime, later, we agree.
Go ahead.
Two, uh, three things, what I would suggest is, even if a person asks some questions, and Mr. Case, who was very forthcoming, brought you information today, I think they would still need to ask that at the neighborhood information meeting.
Yes.
Because that's something on the record, so people who are not here today can also hear the responses.
Of course.
From the, uh, secondly, in the agenda packet was a last minute petition, and so I think, Kevin, if you all make it available on the website, is the recent middle that Lindsay mentioned, which talks about the history responses to, uh, this particular matter. And again, it's March seventh, two twenty, twenty twenty-three, five thirty PM, at the Port of the Islands Resort Conference, is the neighborhood information. Uh, and.
Please come and support it.
Yes, please.
Show up.
Yeah, yeah, and in, in the future, not today, but, um, if you saw the letter that we sent in, Cal, David, and I, Mr. McRee, give your copy of it, I think, I think the whole letter's in this middle was saying, there is access, there is an agreement to reserve ERCs based upon a payment schedule, and that additional ERCs need to be acquired, so there might be an amendment to the utility ERC agreement in the future to get those additional, I think, one point two, one point.
Right. I understand parcel I bought.
As a board attending this meeting.
The NIM?
Do we, I mean, are we able to speak, or, I mean, I don't want.
Uh, what I would suggest is I can put a preferred notice, and I'll look with Kevin and Neil on it. Notice that it is anticipated that two or more members of the district will be in attendance at the NIM, and we'll use the same layout, and that, uh, that meeting will be, uh, recorded of audio and video, and then we would need to have minutes of that, they could be sort of summary minutes.
Okay.
As far as what the board did at the meeting, and so that way the board members can be present, the public knows they're gonna be present. NIMS have to be held in a publicly accessible meeting location, so that meets that custom statute.
So we're good, we have some board, we can go.
I'll make a note to make that notice, and run that by you and Kevin beforehand.
Perfect. Thank you for your time, glad to see you again.
Good question, Mr. McRee, thank you for asking that.
Go ahead, Deb.
Um, is this gonna be in the secret room?
I'm sorry?
Is it gonna be in the secret room?
It says conference center, that's all.
Conference center, I don't know what that means, it'll be in the hotel.
If it's in the secret room, I'm concerned it might not be large enough, because I think there's gonna be a risk.
Well, that's, that's on the applicant to accommodate the number of individuals that appear. And there have been situations where they had to find overflow locations or, but that's on the applicant, that's not a district function. To make sure that a location accommodates all the people they believe are gonna be attended, so.
Thank you, Deb, I hope you're right, I hope there's a lot of people there.
Mr. Case, I've seen, I've seen meetings overflow into the, into the entry, entryway, or into the lobby, let's call it, into the lobby of the hotel, so if you talk to the hotel people, the secret room isn't that big, I agree.
It's got big double doors, though, so you could probably spill out.
That's gonna be something Francesca probably arranged.
She probably doesn't realize how small.
You may be able to, just, I'm just saying, you may be able to flow into the lobby if you talk to the hotel.
That's an excellent point, because then Lindsay can go back to talk to his team, and see if they want to, basically, they may wanna change the location and go date, or some other way, kind of like big monitors or whatever they wanna do.
I think if they've released this, we don't wanna change the location, but we'll just confirm the building can accommodate.
And the building, the people, the listener, and.
Yes.
As long as they know ahead of time.
I mean, I want, I want that, you want?
Yes.
Because the more public record we have, the stronger everything is, even if there's a dissension, we can at least know what we need to be thinking about, that we may be missed.
Right.
Thank you again.
Thanks again.
Um, the last thing is swales issues.
I'm going.
Do you want any?
I, I think, I'm gonna be meeting with Supervisor Manson and discussing that with her.
Okay, um, I know, um, Mr. Miss, I spoke with him yesterday, um, just to put it out there, they, I believe, already signed an agreement that says that, that pipe that's in there, swale there, or that drainage area, that if we have any issues with the, that whatsoever, that it doesn't work in any way, they will take it out or modify it, whatever we decide, so, um.
I'm not aware of an agreement. I haven't seen an agreement or been a part of it.
I will get you a copy of it if it exists then.
Okay.
All right, I'll make note of that, I, that's what I was told, there again, I assume. Okay, anything else on the swale right now? Okay, new business, uh, the fire department thing. Terry, do you have any ideas on what this thing is?
I recommend you call the fire chief to get it right at the border.
Okay.
Yes, and it was a how, uh.
I don't know how it got on the agenda, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, Zach only asked for it.
Yeah, I asked for it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Don't, don't slap me anytime, that's right.
I may be able to help you on this one.
Yeah, and also, I, I had something, and I had Zach Humbar, who, I think you've met Zach, remember, attorney? He represents, and does work for Everglades City, and they're impacted also, and Zach participated, I'm listening, I guess, in a call between the county and Greater Naples on the fourteenth of February, Mr. Chucky, you may have more recent. Then I can repeat, Zach just.
I'm bringing that letter up right now from Choppy Fire. Here we go. Okay, we're under agreement, um, I don't know if you can all remember when we got our fire station, there was a consolidation effort between Greater Naples and Choppy Fire. And we were part of Choppy Fire. As that went through the legislature to become an actual, uh, where they took us in to Greater Naples, right? Um, a consolidation effort, as it went through, there's different thoughts as to what happened, but, uh, Greater Naples Fire will tell you that the legislature didn't go along with it, and it was stopped, all right? So we did consolidate with Greater Naples, we ended up going under a contract with Choppy Fire, um, through Greater Naples. The questions about the issues of why that happened, I, I believe, this is my opinion, um, that it became a money issue, because right now, we pay four mil fire rate for, to have our fire protection, you look on your tax bills, the rest of Greater Naples pays one mil, all right? So we pay about four times as much as they do, because we're way out here, so to speak. So this agreement, um, has to be renewed by April. Uh, and because it has to be renewed, it's being talked about now, so I was in a county, with the county manager, assistant county manager, to talk about some of the things we promised we'd look into, uh, whether we can consolidate some efforts, um, with our community and the county. And one of the items that came up at the meeting from the county manager was this agreement that's going on. Greater Naples went to the county, they were getting five hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year subsidy from the county to have us in this Choppy agreement here. They have now come in for the new agreement and asked for one point two million in all new fire trucks. So, um, it's more than double, the county has to, uh, either, they have to either put up or the agreement falls apart. If we totally lose the agreement, we could lose our fire station, right? Because we're Greater Naples at this point, and we go back to being part of the Choppy Fire District. They refer to that in here, that if it doesn't go through, that, that it'll fall apart in the letter that was sent. So it comes down to money, really comes down to money, whether, whether the county will pay the extra money to keep the agreement as it is, and we continue to pay four mil, uh, in my opinion, we should really take a really good look at, at trying to get the consolidation effort passed through the legislature. If we can do that, um, we would probably go down to one mil, like the rest of Greater Naples. The county has offered, uh, some type of an agreement to kind of subsidize that for maybe up to five years or something, to help us make that agreement work. As they build out on forty-one, and the more houses that come in to play down forty-one around the, the New Republic's Gap, or supermarket, and across the street, and on the, on the, what would be the east, west side of, um, Six LS Farms, there's land there that's gonna be developed into houses, as those housing projects get closer to us, it is easier for Greater Naples to take us in at the same amount of money, because when they come out of the fire station, if they turn left, they're going to help people that pay one mil on their fire taxes, and if they stay here, we pay four mil, right? And that can be worked out better with the existing fire stations as those houses build out, if we become more part of it rather than being way out there. So I guess at this point, I'd like to see us as a community get involved in this negotiating process. The assistant manager with the county has asked if, if we would do that, if we wanted to do that, and I would like to work on this, I'm a retired firefighter from Green Bay, Wisconsin. I did nine years as, as a battalion chief, and worked with the budgets and the county boards and the city councils, the fire districts, we, we did some consolidation prior to leaving Green Bay. We, we took on a couple of the neighboring communities to Green Bay, and there are some issues that go along with that, especially at startup, um, with your contracts and things that you end up getting into as you take in suburbs and things. And I think that, um, I may be able to help out on this effort of trying to get us consolidated, true consolidation with Greater Naples. So that's where it's at, it's money thing, I don't think we're gonna lose our fire station, I think the county's gonna put up some money to see the agreement go through, or better yet, if we could actually push it through the legislature and become actually part of Greater Naples, it puts us on a better, um, platform to pay the same thing. There's only one other district in Greater Naples that pays four mil, and that's up by Corksboro Road. Uh, there's a section of the community up there that's paying a higher rate like we are, but I, as I believe the county manager stated, we're the only two that pay the higher rate. So, when this agreement came around four years ago, when, uh, this consolidation effort went through, that was kind of the goal, to get us on the same rate, and lower our fire taxes that we all pay, um, but that didn't happen, so.
Excuse me, Dan, you said, so the state legislature has to be involved in this?
They do, they have to approve the agreement. And there were some issues there, not sure if the legislature had that many issues, or if, uh, Greater Naples saw the dollar value in not becoming consolidated, because I believe, the county manager said that he didn't think there was anything, by law, that, that allows for two different tax rates once we're, if we would be consolidated with Greater Naples. And if the consolidation did go through, then, then they can keep our rate at four. So, I think it comes down to a money thing, we really do.
I for one hope that we do keep this fire department, because I know two people, and I'm sure there'll be more, that I know personally, it saves their lives. We had to wait almost a half hour for, you know, EMS to get here.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's any concern that we're gonna lose our fire station, okay? It says in the letter that it could be a possibility, but I don't see that, I think it's a money thing, it's gonna be worked out. And I think it's an opportunity for us to push it in for true consolidation in Greater Naples.
Yeah, I don't want those on, as I mentioned, Zach Humbar, the fire district had a board meeting in February fourteen, I don't know if you attended that by Zoom.
I did not.
Their meeting, you can attend by Zoom, and Zach reports that the, it says, in his most recent February fourteen meeting, Greater Naples considered the issue again, confirmed, as you said, a deal had not been met, stood by his decision to terminate service April thirtieth. Zach attended the meeting, and it was stated on the record that it is expected a deal will be reached, and those service terminations will take place, but the reality. and those service termination will take place, but the reality is that if an agreement is not reached, and thus Greater Naples revokes its notice and moves to leave, provide a service, and service will stop, that gets back to what you were doing. So I can, basically, that's just a little bit of filler for what you were doing.
Right.
All right, that's, we're about out of time here, um, thanks, Dan, for, uh, doing, doing all that work, I. Didn't have asked for that, did I?
I, I have a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Truckey made a request, I think it's an appropriate request, and he needed designated representative of the district.
Absolutely.
Uh, communicate with, uh, be participating in, to articulate the district position and provide information. So I think it would be appropriate to have a motion of.
I'm making a motion that Dan, Dan spearheads this, uh, this work with the fire, uh, district and whatnot.
Just a second.
One second.
On favor?
Sure.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that went screen, so if you ever.
Okay, uh, now, then we're on to supervisors' requests, anybody have a, any requests? For today? None, comments, uh, I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Lynette Rose.
Lynette's got something for us.
I live on Sunrise K, and I was very pleased to see Mr. McEve riding through on a bicycle over on our side of the world in Newport, um, but I was on my daily walk. You never get to walk in this community, because there's always people that you know, that we've got several of us that were standing there, and Mr. McEve, he stepped up to us. Well, we talked about several subjects, not anything in particular, but I brought up, everyone's always looking for additional funding sources for something. There is a funding source called Community Development Grant Funds, C D B G. It's, it's operated primarily for low and moderate income families, which we do not qualify for. But there is an area in it called Area Benefit, which we could possibly look at either a community center, we looked at, uh, hospital and generators for emergency services, something of that sort. It is a one-year application, it's applied through the county. I did get the name and point of contact that I will give you for then, and, uh, it's just something else to look at.
How big, how much money?
Oh, I mean, you applied, I mean, it.
Billion or?
She's just starting the process.
You know, uh, I'm just telling you, there's another source of funding for, for qualified use. Um, the other thing that we talked about was military surplus. I have found three sites for military surplus that I'll be more than happy to give you. I did look directly at McHale, because that's in Florida, it's Tampa, it's the closest one. Um, that is, you will need to call to find out when the next one is. However, there is a site that's called, uh, GulfPlant.com. It had every surplus for military in the world, and it has one state and one locate, Australia, Europe, wherever. You can go and view which items are for surplus and the price that they're wanting for, and they're of an option, but I will get that information to you, and that's what we discussed.
What was your name again?
Lynette Rose.
Lynette, and this is a perfect example of what I'm trying to get going in this community. I see a group of people, I stop and I talk to them, and all of a sudden, we find somebody who's got something of very, could be very beneficial to this community. All we have to do is ask them, and I would hope that we could continue this type of a thing where we've got people with expertise, all we have to do is find out, and we can potentially, um, have great benefit to this community, but, you know, I thank you for that, um.
I did it for twenty-seven years, I retired, I love the retirement, I don't wanna do it, but I'm more than happy to help anybody that wants to do it.
Absolutely. Um, audience.
Can I talk to you a little bit after? After, after.
And, and go ahead.
Patrick O'Leary, five-two-five, Newport Drive, kind of new here, can you tell me, uh, is mosquito spraying done in the face?
Because you know the guy.
Yeah, we do it whenever, whenever the calls start coming in, that, um, they're getting that, if you start getting, but usually we, I think last year we started in February, because of, for some reason. But I hadn't had, I, I'm outside all the time, I haven't had any issues, but.
Over at the marina, we're getting hammered.
Can't spray over there.
Oh.
Can't spray over there, kills the shrimp. Yep.
Yeah, he's, he's phoned that out the hard way.
Twice, killed the shrimp twice. Oh, yeah, no, good on Newport, but we can't, we used, we were driving in around the marina, through the, uh, where the cars are parked and stuff.
I would think.
To drive. Yeah, no, we couldn't do that, but.
I wonder if we could, uh, if we could look into some other type of application there that wouldn't kill shrimp.
I don't know, we use the duet, which is the same thing the county uses, so, I, I don't know.
But you, you.
I, okay, let's.
Crustaceans. Keep them up with something.
Why would we be responsible for the marina? That's county owned.
Well, no, people wanna go in there and kill the shrimp every time he's sprayed.
That's what I'm saying.
The people on the boats, the people on the boats are not on.
Yeah, they wanna be sprayed, so that it.
They're, they're paying.
So it drift over the boats.
We need to pay for it.
They pay it, the people, a lot of those people on those boats are paying assessments, just like everybody else. So that's why we take care of it.
Right, yeah, people are starting to get a bit of a memo, because where I am, I'm, I'm, any other, no mosquitoes.
Anything else for anybody?
Do you wanna see if there's anybody online?
Absolutely.
Is there anyone online that had a comment? I guess not.
I'm just, make a motion.
Well, hearing no further comments, I made a motion, we adjourn.
Now, second half.
Okay.
All right, time to eat.
All right, thank you.
Yes, yes, resume, resume at the water.
Hey, chief?
Yes, sir.
Can make it nice and clean. Kevin's going to type it all up.
I wasn't thinking of the people living on the boats, I was thinking of people putting boats in the water, that's like.
That's, that's fine.
Sorry, I'm behind you.
Yes, I know. Yep. You know, it was a great.
What have you been doing?
Did you do all the conversations?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I told you, I don't know, I know, thanks, yeah. Oh, gotcha, I didn't think on the right part. Also, since last April, I was first time, was you, the Interpublic Works Director, Phil Anabel, be a little, okay, he arrived.
Yeah, I think Barry just. I saw one day he looked like me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I, yeah, we'd say.
Well.
Well, it's common, it's common. Yeah, it's common. I'm wearing a red robe.
You gotta get those, uh.
I think I'm gonna celebrate one year out there.
Wow, that's amazing.
It's hipper.
Y'all gonna get that dot three done over at Key Mark?
Well, that's something, that's a way.
Yeah. Oh, they're here the C D B.
Yeah, C D B, yeah, yeah. I think the issue, well, wasn't there a fight between the boat owners and the H R A, and the insurance, probably? I think that's what I.
There's two phases.
Yeah. Looks a little bit, uh.
That's a, that's a picture.
I, I was, that's, that's the oldie.
He spilled out a little bit.
Yeah, I know. Hell, we all know.
Yeah, tell me about it. Call me, Stephen, eat. Yeah, I will, you know I will.
Yeah, with Kevin and Terry and something pops up. I thought we talked way back where we were trying to. It's a different, we did that, Billy.
Oh, we'd love to.
I hate that.
Oh, it is, it is. I don't even go in there.
I, I still got it on my list, uh, following back.
Yeah, we can work with Solomon on that.
No, I talked.
Sure. I get that and go.
I know, that's what I've been dealing with.
You need to carry on with the day cut. I'm sorry? Yeah. Well, before you leave, I've got this stuff inside, I've had this aside. And one, I think, I think it's. Right.